Ah, yes. Well, that.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go.
These are blow three.
It looks like it's.
Survey.
Yep.
It's.
It goes.
Yeah, it's coming.
Wait for it.
Yes, there is.
Dial on plugged it. From the top, plug it in.
Where is? Yeah, just start where you were.
Sure, right. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by completing a public comments sign up sheet and handing it to the deputy clerk. Any comments involving personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration is not allowed. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. Action taken at today's meeting is forward to the recommendation for final approval at the next regular school board meeting. First up on our agenda this evening is comments by members of the public. We do have three requests and our first speaker is Mr. Lee Sims.
Good evening. I'm Lee Sims. I teach science at high school. And the last time I saw the board was Friday night at graduation. And I was kind of surprised that the senior prank never made it into any of the speeches. Those of you that remember Thursday morning, the Spartan Commons was very festive and we had many parades outside that morning. The fire lamps weren't there. But graduation is a reminder of the big picture and the importance of our roles as educators. And I believe that everybody in this room cares deeply about the mental, social, emotional development of Superior's youth, which is why I'm here speaking tonight, because I too care deeply about Superior's youth. They are the future of our community and beyond. And so I'm compelled to speak about the changes I've seen in students using the SBG practice. Main issues I see are with the lack of engagement, informative work, unsupported deadlines, and summatives that don't matter when students already have a score for a particular standard. No matter how much I preach the philosophy of SBG, and I try, students can see straight through SBG and see the lack of accountability in the learning process and at times summatives, and often view it as optional. Sure, under traditional system, there were students who didn't give their best, but my estimation is now that has become the majority. So as a building, we've been focused on building better relationships and creating more engaging lessons. And I believe that we've never tried harder, nor have we never done a better job. However, the comments I hear are, it's formative, so it doesn't matter, or I already have a score for that standard, so I'm not going to try as hard. Their comments primarily revolve around the current SBG policy and what it allows them to do or not to. And unfortunately, I've witnessed work ethic, grit, and academics and overall, and overall decline these past three years as a result. And I do not believe that SFT has a position about SBG, but I do know they have a position that teachers' voices are heard. And so you're all aware of their survey data, and it only takes two hands to count the percent of respondents that would choose what we are currently doing. That leaves the other 90% somewhere on the spectrum of small changes, blending it with traditional, or scrapping SBG altogether. And so I believe there's a strong appetite to find some compromise and get more buy-in from staff and students. I look to the Henry Ford quote, which I assume is still hanging down the hall, where it has for many years, "Coming together is the beginning, keeping together is progress, and working together is success." Administration speaks highly of Superior Schools and our staff, and in my opinion, it's working together, especially during times when there's disagreement. That's what makes us such a successful district. So please, let's work together to figure this out. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
Next speaker, Mr. Kyle Smith.
As I listen to Lee, I really just, I'll just keep mine short and just say, ditto, I really echo a lot of everything really with what Lee said. And so I'll just, I'll be brief. I don't want to, I wasn't really sure if I was going to speak tonight. I'm speaking to you not as the SFT president. I'm speaking to you as a 27-year veteran in the classroom. Just like to say, like many teachers, we're frustrated about SBG. Not naive to think that it will go away. And I know we've put a lot of work into our proficiency tables, coaching, and creating lessons. But I just hope that we can, as kind of Lee, come together to make this better. We've done this in the past with other initiatives. I feel like there's room for improvement. You know, true SBG wouldn't even have a letter grade. I understand. It's about, you know, if they get the standard. But we're not able to do that. We need a letter grade, as far as I know, as far as for transcripts and going to college and maybe some other, other parts. And so we do have that grade that sits out there. And like Lee said, I try and I'm embracing and pushing and I'll tell them, it's not about the grade, it's about the learning. And they tell me it is about the grade. I'm very fortunate. A lot of my students that I teach with the AP US History and the Senior Social Class, you know, it is about the grade for many of these folks. And they're frustrated too, in some regards. So it'd be great to hear from students. I guess some of my general concerns is we switched to a highest for the standard about two years ago, a few weeks before we started. I don't feel like there was much discussion. An hour or two years into it, I feel like it would be great to have a discussion. Does the highest, does that seem to work the best? Can, what are the flaws? Is there, if it's working for some, what can we do for others that struggle to make it work for them? Where's Anne?
Anne, how are we?
Oh, sorry. I didn't know.
You have 40, 40 seconds.
So glad that you were.
Yep.
Okay. So, so I said, um, so I, I think looking at the scale, I mean, we did, Aaron put in the 2.5, and I think that was, that was, for most people, they think that's a good thing. I really kind of hit home looking at trying to figure out grades, how, how an impact of a three to a four has mathematically on one's score. I'm not sure, you know, it's, the four is, you know, like an A+, but an A+ is the same as a GPA with a three. And so it would be nice maybe to look at the, the scale itself. It's, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Tyler Ross.
Good morning. Good afternoon. Yeah. I'm Tyler Ross, chemistry teacher at Superior High School for the last dozen years now. And it's my sincere hopes in speaking with the school board today is to gain your help in getting answers to fundamental questions about standards-based grading at SHS. I've done my level best to work with our administration to have such questions answered, and so far have been met with either warnings of disciplinary action or silence, never answered. Perhaps today's meeting can finally motivate our administration to share with the rest of us the data necessary to provide, to properly evaluate the success or failure of the implementation of SBG. There are several questions that I believe would provide some illumination. By what metrics is SBG being measured? And to follow up, why has this information been kept secret from teachers, parents, and students? Next question, can you share the peer-reviewed studies that helped convince you that SBG was superior to traditional, to traditional based grading practices in the first place? Information has never been shared, source data. Next question, in the absence of the Spartan grade, how are student skills such as turning in work on time, being respectful, completing informative work being measured? In my knowledge, that is not being measured at all. If SBG, oh, last question. If SBG really is a better way to teach, why has our administration been so reluctant to share the data that would bear this out? I'd personally be happy to share the data that I have, the pictures of my grade book, or an accurate SBG, and you'll be able to see the difference 10 feet away from my computer screen. Because for every missing assignment, there's an orange square that pops up and, well, it looks like a giant orange just flashing lights staring back at you after SBG or before. I could work through the teacher magic and get at least 95% of students to turn in everything. It's already a travesty that we're a full three years of this in, and these foundation-level questions remain, but let's work together and not let another year go by in the dark. We owe the evidence to every citizen in Superior that we are doing the scientific best to prepare the next generations, and I ask you all for your help to try and get answers to these reasonable questions about SBG. Thank you.
All right, reporter, the super.
Oh, I'm saying, sorry, I forgot. We need to have one more before you. No, you can come up. I, I told him he was first up, but I forgot you were at. No, 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 he's next on the agenda.
He followed the.
I'm sorry. Let Ryan go and then I'll have you call.
This is, uh, this is connected right in, so I can switch.
Yep.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks for having me. This is just our bi-yearly update from Great Lakes.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Is it on?
User error.
Let me get on the podium.
Is it not plugged in?
Not in there.
I'll let you, I'll let you fix that, and then we will return back to Great Lakes.
Side note on my memories, the end of the year party at Great Lakes, when you got dunked, and I have a video of like Manny, my son Mannix at like four years old, just five years old hitting the button and you're swimming. That was yesterday.
We haven't had that back for a while. And I was like, I. I was just, I was just telling my wife the other day, I'm like, well, they don't have the dunk tank, so I'm not going to come home like waterlogged in my ears because it's like boom, boom. It's, well, it's good memories. I hope Mannix is doing awesome.
Thank you.
Anyways, Great Lakes, let's talk a little bit about that. Just some celebrations. And I'll show you a little bit of specific on this here, too. Really happy, student achievement, something we've worked really hard on, continues at least in trend to move up. And then the transition stuff, mainly the incoming Lake Superior students, I think we've had some good days these, these past weeks with those things. I was just doing my, my eval this morning, my summative with Amy, and one of the things I like is we've had Fastbridge for like two years now, so we're able to kind of keep the stink, the same student learning objective or our same goal, and kind of look at it across time. And the big thing I want to focus in here on is that we continue to push our achievement up in reading. I wish it went a little bit higher, because our goal was actually to get to 90% this year. Kids made growth, but we didn't quite get where I wanted to, at least when I look at the 40th percentile in the assessments we use for Fastbridge. The second point about the Lake Superior, we've been working really hard on making sure that we transition, right? We have a majority of Lake Superior's joining the Great Lakes next year. So one of the big things is we did some rebranding. So we actually are going to be moving to the Great Lakes Elementary Eagles next year. And we did the best we could to combine Great Lakes with Lake Superior. You can see up there the Great Lakes parts of the design or the blue color scheme. We kept the anchor in since that's been a mainstay in our, our logo. We have been the Great Lakes Waves for as long as I'm aware, at least, and we actually have an Eagle mascot, which seemed to go over pretty well with the kids. The Eagles mascot's name is going to be Waves. We're keeping that part in there. And then the Lake Superior aspects, we brought the Eagles nickname over, and we added the, the yellow, which is a Lake Superior color, and that kind of merged it with that. And then, of course, the Eagle mascot. I had two teachers, Mrs. Conlon, Miss Berman, who taught probably 10, 15 years at Lake Superior. And when the boundary changes were made, they talked to me like, we got to do some rebranding. We got to make sure like their community is brought in with this. So I, I think we arrived at what I think is a good solution. And we were able to start getting some early spiritware orders out because I had some Lake Superior parents coming to me about that. So I think that went over well. I hope those kids between this and the parent transition night feel good about coming to, to Great Lakes and we'll, we'll pick up with all the great work the Lake Superior crew has done for all these years. Challenges, I, I know I say this every time I'm in a board meeting, and I probably talked to Amy about it this morning, too. It's just, just my, my teachers, the mental health throughout the day, just triaging that while trying to make sure the kids are still making progress with their math and reading. I'm really lucky, and I think other principals say the same thing, but in, in my opinion, I have the best staff anywhere, and I'm really proud of them. And just seeing how hard they work to, to manage this each day. I think I, I need to say that publicly to you as well. And then parent involvement, and this kind of relates to the transition. We were talking, actually, I feel like I'm visiting a conversation I had with Amy today, too. I know Lake Superior really close knit, probably as all of our elementary schools are, but we were talking about doing a little bit more with this next year. And I'm not talking just family night. We were even talking about even bringing some groups in and talking about parenting and aligning that with what we're trying to do at the school. Like, I'm talking reading, social media, just having some conversations about that, because we really do need our schools and families on the same page if we're going to get these kids to a point where they've got good character. And a lot of things out there that when all of us were kids, we didn't have. And it's not always helping, but just seeing if we can build some capacity around that. The goals and progress, I kind of referenced this a little bit, like our big goal was a literacy goal. In the fall, we had about 69% of kids met the 40th percentile, and we used the decodable words for kindergarten and first grade, combined that with A-reading second through fifth grade, which is a comprehension assessment. We set our goal for 90. We got to 82%. As I said, we continue to incrementally move up. Again, my summative was today. I told Amy, we did fail on that. And one of these days, I'm going to walk in and say, all right, we got it. I don't know when that's going to.
You're making growth. You didn't fail.
We are making growth, but we didn't meet the 90%.
That's exactly what I said.
Um, I'm fairly laser focused on that. I, and this is the graph from this year, too. I just kind of snipped the, just this year's part of it. Action steps for this, next year, we're going to be hitting the ground harder with the language comprehension components and reading instruction. I feel like we've done a great job with word recognition, but we're going to go deeper with some vocabulary, the role of comprehension instruction next year. And then, before I get to any of that, with all the changeover in students, I'm sending about 100 to L, or about 100 to Northern Lights, getting about 65, 70 from LSE, and a few from other buildings. We're going to be starting with heavy with PBIS. And not that I'm not going to get to the academics, but I need to make sure like we are all functioning really well, routines and procedures. So that's where we're going to start next year, heavier than we probably have in seven years or so. All right. I appreciate your time. Are there any questions or anything that I can answer for you guys?
You've done a really nice job with the transition process. I think that I received a lot of positive feedback about that.
I hope so. We're going to take really good care of those kids. And kids, we try to do always. I, you know, when I first got here, I thought, boy, I didn't know the high school, middle school, much interest in Great Lakes.
They do, yeah. You're wondering what you had going on.
For the logo reveal. No, well, I've got, I've got to not disappoint. I've got a fancier one to that. If you want to come in fall.
Yeah, next year.
I had leave come in, you would have loved them.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
You heard it. Ryan's got the best teachers.
No, that's what he thinks. We think they're all. Just.
We will continue our meeting. There are no action items and no discussion items. First up for our committee, policies and rules committee with Mr. Grant Calvert.
We have no action items, no policies to review, no discussion items, and one informational item. Captain Bill Lear.
Now you're up.
With the Superior Police Department will present a report on school resource officer program 2324 pursuant to our policy 8407. Welcome, Kevler.
So we have two real school resource officers, Matt Smarson's in middle school, Jeff Darsis in high school. In the past year, we responded to 323 incidents at the school. 256 of those were offensive. 217 involved some kind of enforcement. Our two resources officers have attended several trainings throughout the year. They did a weapon in school tabletop scenario. They both went to the school resource officer conference last year. They've attended youth mental health training and training on opioid overdoses and insulin training. And then this past March, we did a full-scale scenario at the school with the fire department active shooter rescue task.
And you've been working with them directly for the last month or so? Before that, it was fall, right?
I worry.
Yeah, okay. Um, I don't know, do you guys have any questions? Can I ask if those incidents, is that up from last year or down, or do you not know?
What I don't know.
Okay, we could find that out, though. I, we could pull up last year's report.
I've broken down my school, too. We've had that in the past.
So compare to last year by school?
Yep.
Okay. I can, I can send you an email afterwards and connect about that.
And just about the, the conference, I've, I've seen those and way in the past, I'd forward them to Amy, but I know you guys are on it, so I don't, I don't do that anymore. But I'm wondering, like, is the report back? Like, a lot of those topics are really progressive and really interesting. So I'm just wondering how they implement, or where, what are those topics that they're bringing back? Are there any recommendations to the work that you're doing when you go to those conferences and come?
I don't know.
Sorry, that was a lot of questions. But they, they have great topics. I don't know, Ed, if you've ever looked at what, if you get those emails, but there's a lot of good sessions that they have for SROs.
And when we've done like back-to-school trainings around discipline or different, you know, code of conduct, those kinds of, we always try to include them. So they're well-informed as to the whole school system and how they kind of fit within that. We've talked a lot about roles and responsibilities, so folks know when we contact an SRO versus a principal. And so, I mean, I don't know, Aaron Fezzi, I mean, I don't know, we probably still need to do that each year and throughout the year, but that's probably one piece of feedback that I get annually, just clarifying those roles. They, they ask for that, and people ask for that, too, that we clarify, you know, when do you reach out to an SRO versus the principal or something? Yeah.
Not that we have the money, but we've also held discussions about our elementary schools and, and just that we don't have folks at the elementary school and, yeah.
Paul had said last year when we talked about it, that he really thinks he would struggle to be able to staff that. I don't know if that's still base, but.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah. So those you guys are still down, too, right?
Yep.
Okay.
If I had to guess, most of these 323 incidents, they're talking about, a lot of them are probably truancy and/or some kind of vaping or something like that. Schools are not necessarily like high crime situation. Of course, there are fights in one, but the majority are those truancies and vaping.
The other thing that is new legislation that was passed this year is we are obligated to provide some specific data similar to what he shared, but even more with board and with community and have information posted next year around incidents at schools. And so that's information I'm still waiting to get from DPI about how those reports need to be generated. But those will be things that we'll be bringing to the board and the community on a regular basis for that legislation. So it connects with that data.
Yeah, that's kind of the focus of like any kind of assault, you know, those more type of violent crimes, which I know are much fewer, but that's the data I was looking for. Does it include forceful, which is not law enforcement, but?
No, we will be providing an update on restraints and seclusions at our August board meeting. That's when that information, we need to submit that to DPI. So that'll come in August. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Hi.
Excellent. That's all the matters I have.
That's all that matters?
That's all that matters.
All right.
Right. Next, our personnel negotiations committee with Ms. Brooke Taylor.
I have one action item. Administration recommends approval of the June 2024 new hires and separations report.
Motion approved. Second?
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Molly, and number, a number of the resignations in the pair professional, where do we sit now as far as the number of people that we add to possibly lay off and now some of these that are resigning? What do our numbers look like right now as we start to look ahead already to September?
We have recalled almost all of them. So the people leaving up here, a lot of them are for different reasons. They didn't want to go to a different school, somewhere in college and finishing, somewhere in high school, going to college. And some just got other jobs, like at the end of every other school year. But yes, we most likely will have to post jobs somewhere in the school year.
And to elaborate on that, you know, a lot of new hires for teachers, same thing with list after layoffs and whatnot. How have we cycled through those?
We have offered 12 teachers jobs back from the list. All of them have taken the jobs. Some of them have passed them off. So they are off the list.
It's good.
Can I ask, get too deep into this, but when you're offering jobs back, are you offering jobs back to people with the right licensers and everything? Or are you offering with the expectation that they go get licensed and then come back?
There's a couple positions like sped, that they don't have the license, so they will be, went back to school to get the license.
We offer that to everybody and said, if you're interested in, if you've been, if you're on the reemployment list and you're interested in a special education position, if you apply and get the position, we'd be willing to pay the tuition for them to get their license for that, because we are so short-staffed in special education. So we've had a couple people take us up on that. About other positions, if there's like a 4K opening, then Molly looks to see who's 4K licensed and offer that position to the next person on the list. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
There's kind of two different scenarios there.
Then in any of these, then they're, they're offered, is it a one-year emergency license or can the state go beyond one year?
Well, we do a one year, because a lot of teachers can program down in a year just based off of what they're. But you can up that one-year license for three years.
That's good.
We have 25 positions. You said you offered 12. Some declined, or we have 12 left, like 12 still on the list?
We have offered, it was either 12 or 13. I have to go back and count. But no, we do not, we have very few left on the list.
Like single digits?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
And some of those are secondary, which we most likely won't be recalled. So like the credit recovery.
Any further discussion? Or none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Motion carries. I have no discussion items and no informational items. That ends my report.
Next up, operations.
Right down, Sarah Schubert-McCole.
Yeah, all the things.
You do.
Action items. Administration recommends approval of resolution 24-02 Compliance Maintenance Resolution CMAR summary.
Motion approved. Second?
So this is something we bring to the board every June. David, do you want to just explain what it is?
So this is in relation to these water treatment. So you can see, we've got 80 people, so we did well on it. It's amazing that somebody goes to Four Corners. It isn't like a little thing. These are huge ponds and they request an oak or so we can, then we'll do some kind of testing or whatever. These ponds are about the size of Four Corners. So it's. These ponds are about the size of Four Corners. So it's, they are massive. They do a really good job and said, maybe in our, we have more stricter standards. Still working with that, but hopefully this testing we have for the rest of the board.
Good jobs to our operations folks, our maintenance folks.
Further discussion? Am I doing this right?
We take a vote.
All those in favor of approving, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, Buildings and Grounds Long Range Facility Update. David C., Director of Business Services.
Action.
I don't know if this needs to be an action item. I'm realizing it's under the action item. Yeah.
And for more information.
Just make it as a discussion item? There's no action to take.
Put on the agenda.
Can someone make a motion to move it on the agenda?
Make a motion to move the Building and Grounds Long Range Facility Update to an informational item.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second to move the Buildings and the Grounds to informational items. Is there any further discussion? Bring none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I think David can still give an update right now.
David, you can give your update.
Yeah.
Oh, you guys seen Bobby almost has something like this kind of his own sales spreadsheet. So he's always had a base of how we create the long-range facility. But the only reason I'm giving this update is Bobby's in Kansas. So I know there was a hundred-plus-page document that said, oh, that was mainly so you guys can see, hey, this is all background. We've had the third party that came and did it. Just so we can see everything, what Bobby anticipates is at the beginning of, or at the end or beginning of each year, they're going to go through and, you know, go and look and see what the status is on everything. So this is the document use of the PDF. This is the actual sales spreadsheet that the league used to check it. So if he's over, this is down, he's over the Great Lakes, he's going to go in there and have somebody go in there and check and say, all right, this is the stuff that we prioritize over five years. How is it? It's a status on it, stuff that's five to 10, and then 10-plus years, trying to capture everything. You might have really good furnaces and roofs at different buildings. We want to make sure we're always tracking that. So it's never a surprise. So this will get updated every single year. What I anticipate is this will be 2024s and then next year we'll have 2025s, 2026s. So they'd always go back and see the history and see where we're at on on the long-range facility plans, you know, added notes. So it's going to be kind of a living document. I will tell you that Bobby comes to me on time and says, hey, we need money for this. We don't have money for this and that. That's something that we've always wanted to do. The district is we're prioritizing to making sure we're getting everything for the kids inside the building as opposed to prioritizing this maintenance. Unfortunately, we are starting to pay the price for that. You can really defer maintenance for so long before So I think it's, this is gonna, because Bobby already had a plan, this is more of a structured, easy, something I can look to instead of asking Bobby and him describing it to me. I'll be able to go into this setting a few times later. What do I got to worry about in the next three years if I'm installed in current track? So.
David, maybe I didn't study that enough when I first looked at it because it is a lot. I was a little like crap. But so Bobby is doing maintenance to hold out the roof, right? Particularly SMS. When he does that, how much is that costing us?
It's going to vary depending on what the Q is.
Okay.
So, I mean, they do the yearly evaluation. So.
Yeah.
There's also different types of roofs. That's why Bobby basically wants to go with a self-adhere. This is out of my traditional side of it, but there's, right now there's rocks on top of it, which isn't the best kind. And then there's self-adhere, which is I don't know. And if you see the costs, I'll give you the cost. The company that came in and gave us the, so these costs aren't anywhere.
Yeah.
So when something gets closer to that point, Bobby goes and gets, you know, those
Updates.
Quotes, it's, it's
So is this something we can look at, strategic planning? Implement ways to use it, use that and get updated pricing as we need to.
Thank you. What up? Administration recommends an increased cost for all student and staff lunches that will take effect on July 1st, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's here to sustain.
Yeah, Jamie, give me some more info, man.
Yeah, nothing.
It's not good news.
If you have questions, this is what I ask more every year and I bring people.
One of the questions I asked Jamie then, who would be a question of the board, is why are we making changes? When we usually run a very healthy budget, right? So I think you had a really good answer there.
We run a healthy, I'm a firm believer in we take a little bit every year when we can. We didn't take any price increases for three years over COVID when meals were free for all students. And it feels like we're still backfilling from then. Like, we're not. I would hate to not take this small increment and wish next year we did. I know a dime doesn't seem like a lot, but it is to some families. So we take a dime every year and just try to stay where we need to be for our food costs. I am adding, we look at every year at this time, at our accounts that need to go to collections. Students and families that don't pay for meals are generally on the paid side. And we have about two dozen families that are our reduced price status. And I keep looking at that and it doesn't sound like a lot of money. Again, it's a quarter, but they don't pay for it. And we have the funds to be able to pay those off and to treat from here and moving forward, all our reduced students as free students. They will still be reduced status, but we won't charge them that quarter. Our department will absorb that. So it's kind of washed with what we're doing here and then we're taking care of more families.
What's Angel fund at?
That's not my department.
That serves, you know, well, I guess it's carry. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it serves everything more than just the food accounts. It serves it, you know.
I always thought it was just allotted for the kids on Delight Quay. Okay.
That's a lot, a lot of people donate for that reason, but it's also for students who need, you know, winter jacket or glasses.
On that graduation.
Yeah.
Just for that. Both the, we definitely use Angel's fund this year to pay off a lot of those nuances.
People ask for it if it's there. We will get asked if people want to, people want to donate, kind of steer them. You know, we have $500. I think the Lions Club donated a while back. And then we kind of direct them which way, you know, $500 sounds like it's a lot, but it's not. So they have a connection to Brian. So we have them pick a classroom or a grade and see if we can pay off all the debt at that time then.
So I had assumed free and reduced was more state-funded. And so what you're saying is it's funded through the students and families that are paying for their lunch?
Usually we get funding from a lot of different places, no different than anybody else. We provide free breakfasts for all our students, free after-school meals at our middle school and high school. Half of our students pay for meals and the other half do not. The other half get earned on free and reduced status. The half we get from families is what we're talking about here. We, most of our funding comes from the USDA. We are from a federal program. We get a very small amount from the state.
Okay.
Maybe the question I heard, maybe when you cut the 25 cents for the free and reduced, you said you're absorbing the costs, but is that the families absorbing the costs that are paying or is that somewhere else that's absorbing the cost?
Little bit of both and all at the same time.
What's happening is he has a fund, he has a fund balance. He's really efficient with his budget and how he runs everything. Where if he, he either adds money to his fund balance at the end of the year or so what this is, it's such a small amount that is the kids that are really at high risk that I need. Because there's a lot that, a lot of parents, like Jamie said, they'll go and get the lunch and they won't pay for it. But there's also, their families can't afford it, but also they're not going to go to collection. So they'll just tell their kids not to get food. And so that's what Jamie's kind of.
Our reduced families, in order to be in this status, a family of four is making anywhere from $40,000 a year to $55,000 a year. We're talking about a quarter here, okay? They can't pay that and I don't want to own them for that quarter that adds up all year. They have bigger fish to fry, bigger problems than that quarter. And they're not paying it. All we want to do, yep, some of our families who can absorb that because our program is healthy. They choose to in the form of all-in-one card or support us in concessions, or how about they just come through the line and they pay for it? And that's part of the program.
So part of the revenue.
About $8,000 a year.
And your revenue, going back to your original point, your revenue is generated mostly by federal support.
Yep.
Some state dollars, parent costs, as well as your concessions. So between all of those sources of revenue, you're able to absorb that, that.
Excellent.
His increase on it is a 3.6% increase on the 275 of this school lunch. Inflation is like 4% or something.
Yeah, if we don't stay ahead of this, he's going to be behind it.
What isn't, my student is a top three reduced. Because of this, my student is paying more.
Exactly.
This is going to be, this would happen regardless. He came to me and said, here's the stuff I need to do. I mean, it's just to show that, yes, this is something we need to work with the district.
Everything that we do when we have a surplus is how do we get it back in families' hands? How do we get it back to that period? And this is a way we feel like we can do that.
And I'm not opposed to the free and reduce situation. I just think, you know, for some families, especially on that line.
Yep.
The thing is.
A lot.
A dime is a lot. It does add.
I come to this group and you want to have that conversation about why all kids should be eating free meals, we'll have that conversation. Because that stigma of that line, that $55,000 and then $56,500, they don't get free meals.
Right.
And those are the kids that I'm fighting for. And that's the group here that we're paying. Our department is going to put the bill for.
This is always independent of Fontaine. So.
All independent.
This is his, this is like Tim Laniella.
So side note, does that second paragraph need to be changed where it says elementary, middle, and adult meals will both have an increase where the chart just has elementary, middle, and high school and not adult?
Oh, yeah, I see that. And.
Or it is.
475. 75 across the board, no matter where they.
Right, but the paragraph says adults take an increase, but the chart doesn't show an increase.
I did not do an increase in adult lunch about a year and a half ago. You're right. I did not.
So I'm just wondering, do we need to change that or are we improving it?
No.
Chart reflects your changes.
Correct.
Okay.
The 475 was last year. If you make me look at it, now my ears are raw. Current is 24, 25.
Yeah.
I see. Yeah.
You're saying for next year is the right column?
Correct.
So should we get a motion to make sure that that motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the chart to show the appropriate years, which would be the first one from, I believe, 23 to 24, and the second column to be 24, 25 school years.
Thank you.
Second.
And, and middle school is supposed to be the 15 cents, not just.
Well, Jamie, as a, as a student that was on free and reduced hot lunch my entire Spartan experience, and then as a young mom needing this program, I think I appreciate that you're really conscious of the serving those families. Because that is a big part of our population, folks. Not everyone is as privileged as we are up here.
Yell me if you want. I'm reading this. The following increases in elementary, middle school, and adult meals. Doesn't say high school.
You're right.
But the chart.
In pace for the last 10 years.
The chart shows that, I just want to make sure we approve it right and not.
After evaluating meals, the chart reflects the changes for next year. There you go.
Sounds great. Thanks, you.
Need another amendment?
No, because the chart's going to reflect it. I think when, we'll fix it for when we bring this forward next week when you actually approve it. Yeah, I think it just needs to say that due to the reevaluation of it, the chart reflects change.
President, I got a second from Nick Olson. So then we need to vote on the amendment, please.
All for the question. Are you on me too? Okay. And a second to amend the chart, reflect 2324 in the first column and 2425 in the second call. Is there any further discussion?
Can change the wording.
And to change the wording in the.
Match the chart.
To match the chart. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Yep, summer school.
Then you've got one informational item. Yep.
No discussion items, informational items. Obviously Jamie already did his talk. And then we have the summer food service flyer, which is pretty fancy.
This every year. This year we're doing fun sites. I just picked up another one today. We're seeing what else we can get. Our community sites that we take our van and a couple of staff, we visit those starting next Monday and go all the way through, right, until school starts. And then we support our Park and Rec sites every year from June 17th to August 16th at those six sites. All four of our summer school sites, plus we do three programs at the YMCA. And we picked up a handful of EBSs in the community and some other odds and ends that we're always looking. We send like mass emails to say who needs meals where, so we're just trying to get to pockets that aren't being served. Like I said, we're about 20 sites. We start Monday after school's out and we end the, I believe, Wednesday or Thursday before school begins in the fall.
I love seeing how many meals you guys serve.
Thank you. We do awesome.
And I love that you serve some as a parent.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
We already talked about the 25 cent per meal charge for reduced being removed. So it's the resort.
Wasn't that fun in your first?
So fun. Not stressful at all.
Thank you. Next up, Teaching and Learning Committee, Mr. Nick Schumacher.
All right, we got one action item, resource approval. Administration recommends the adoption of the following resource for secondary math courses. These resources need seven-year curriculum, sets of needs, and content area standards. Can you motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, Ms. Crystal.
All right. Um, our secondary math team has been doing quite a bit of hard work for the last two years. Just to give you a little bit of context and background, prior to COVID, our secondary math teachers were starting to have some conversation around alignment of their courses and standards and do we need to be looking at resources to meet the students' needs, make sure that we were keeping up with things? Something that was unique, a bit unique about the area of math during COVID is publishing and textbook companies in the area of math really put a halt on their work. They had a lot of workforce issues. And companies were not continuing to develop materials that needed improvements or even create new ones. So the analogy I've been using with our math department for the last few years is there have not been a lot of cars on the lot for sale people. So that's, that's kind of how we've been looking at it. So what we did was in the meantime, we've done a lot of professional development over the last two, two years with our secondary math teachers around standards, looking at data, best practices, et cetera. So back in February, the secondary math team went through a values and priorities document creation process as an activity. They spent a full day in this room doing that, and that included working with our principals as a part of that. Our principals did some additional work and meetings to look at what they were seeing in classrooms when doing observations, looking at research best practices, the standards, et cetera. That led us to a place where we needed to have a smaller committee come together to look at some resources to see if one would be a good fit for us. So every secondary teacher got an opportunity to be part of the process if they wanted to, every secondary math teacher. Eight secondary math teachers came to the table to be part of that process. We had a sixth grade, a seventh grade, and an eighth grade representative. We had a couple from Algebra I, and then we had two teachers that teach some of our advanced classes at the high school. So it was really representative across the board. They spent a couple of days together this spring going through a review process with our values and priority. We took an in-depth look at four secondary math resources as the committee is recommending that Amplify Desmos be the resource that we are asking you as a board to please adopt so we can make that purchase. I sent you the full brochure, the one page within this that might be of most use to you or most be help, might be most helpful is the scope and sequence that's on that document I just passed around. So you can see the layout of the units. One of the things that is, you should know about this resource is that the geometry and advanced algebra components are still being developed. So we don't want to rush that component of it if they're suddenly ready in late August. So the committee wanted to commit to sixth grade through Algebra I implementing this coming fall and then geometry and Algebra II implementing in the fall of '25. Any questions?
I need.
So the, one of the things that I'm thinking of is we're on our seven-year cycle or close to it.
Thank you for asking.
So, yeah, because we do this across all disciplines.
Yep. So something that. Yep. Well, something that districts have, curriculum directors and business managers usually need to partner to do this is because you would never want to have to afford suddenly resources for ELA and math and social studies all in the same year. You have a cycle that's usually out throughout, spread out throughout seven years where you are looking at resources, standards and updates, so then you can kind of span out the bigger purchases. Um, math ideally was due two years ago. But we knew that because there weren't a lot of cars on the lot for sale, that we, there was really nothing available for us to even look at to purchase. So they're a little bit behind, um, because of Act Twenty and our literacy resource purchase being a little wonky now too. Um, David and I are working together and, and we'll make that work. But yes, it's a seven-year cycle that we typically go through. Thanks for asking.
Yes, we redo this too. Just looking at grade six there. Good size. Those are the eight standards then are associated with that in grade six.
Yep. So all of the sixth grade, Wisconsin, let's just take any grade level, I'll, I'll take sixth grade for example. All of the state math standards for that area are integrated into those units. Our teachers, of course, do some what we call essential standards from each of those units that are usually what the summative assessments are based on.
Picks up the committee. To decide on this.
Who makes up the committee? Um, typically myself and the principals. Um, it is typically our rule for all content areas that any teacher who wants to be a part of that committee from that content area gets to be. So all of the secondary math teachers got the opportunity. If all of them said they wanted to be a part of it, then we would have, the process would have probably taken a little bit longer, but that's okay. Um, we gave them two opportunities to say, I want to be a part of that. Um, if we sometimes get only a few people that want to be a part of that, which wasn't the case now. We usually ask for representatives, hey, we have no one from sixth grade. Are any of you interested or any?
No, she said earlier we had eight. Isn't, isn't that what she said?
Eight, yeah, eight teachers that were part of the committee.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Every secondary math teacher could have been a part of the process if they wanted to. Yep. And eight, uh, luckily, typically PLCs teams work together to know like, hey, someone from our team. Our specific course needs to be a part of this. So we have sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. Uh, Algebra One, all represented on the committee. And then we had two teachers that teach some of our more advanced courses, advanced algebra, geometry, calc. That were part of it. So.
Three content. It's represented.
Every one of our math courses was essentially represented in the process.
And the selection process of, um, how many different, um, sources were you able to look at then? And how do you, do you winnow down from there?
Good question.
Rubric that's used.
Yep. So that, back in February on our staff development day, the entire math secondary team, everyone on our staff development day, um, was part of that process and created a rubric. I have two copies. I can just pass them around in case you want to take a peek at those. Um, we created that together. We use DPI documents, standards and then best practices. Search from National Council, Teachers of Mathematics, kind of put together, what are the things that must be included in a comprehensive, high-quality math program, really at any level? And then we create the rubric or the priorities document from there, and then we put the resources through that. So while even though there are now some cars on the lot for sale, there are not a lot of cars on the lot for sale. But we always use EdReports, which is a, um, a document, a rating system that's used throughout our country for all curriculum resources. We in this district always only look at resources that get the highest rating. So we looked at four resources, Into Math, Reveal Math, Lustrative Math, which people often call IM, and then Amplify Desmos. One thing that is, uh, I guess a benefit to, uh, this resource being the one the committee selected is many of our courses have dabbled in using this resource and in a couple of different ways already. Um, as particularly their Algebra One teachers. So, um, while it's not exactly the, the one that we are purchasing, because it's, we're purchasing a new version. Um, it's a resource that has been used in many of our classrooms already.
What do they, sorry. What does, what will this company then offer to our district then as far as ongoing training? Uh, you know.
Great, great question. That is something that we, especially I always take into consideration, what is the customer service going to be like moving forward? We look at a couple of things. One, will you provide training? Two, will you provide ongoing support? Three, are you going to keep up with all of the technology components that go with it? Um, and four, are you a, are you a company, a publisher that's going to continue to develop the product? So if they are getting feedback from districts, hey, you know, the warm-up activities in this unit just aren't working. Or these summatives from this unit aren't quite working. Like as districts give feedback to publishers all the time. And then districts continue to develop the product. So if a company says, we are creating this and not going to continue to develop based on feedback. That's typically a red flag for us. So they will provide training, they will provide ongoing support. They have obviously a whole separate technology component, because Desmos Amplify relies on the use of that. Um, so I, that's usually like a, a given that we look at that and if they won't provide that in our contract and our purchase with them, we aren't, they aren't even, they don't, they wouldn't make the green rating list on Ed Reports if they didn't have that. So, good question.
So for the poorly educated, like myself, what's the difference to the resource in a curriculum?
Good question. So people often use those words interchangeably. And sometimes to help explain it to parents or people who aren't in education. We unfortunately sometimes use them interchangeably as well, just to make it easy to understand. So we have our state standards and then our teachers create curriculum that helps the standards come alive, like what and how you teach that in the classroom. We then purchase resources, not in all content areas, but in, you know, usually math, science, social studies, ELA. We purchase resources or a curriculum resource that helps them carry out those standards. So they're used interchangeably often. Um, we're asking for the purchase of a resource to help carry out the curriculum.
I know. Because in some content areas, you would have more than one resource to support your curriculum.
Right, that's, that's a bit, yeah.
And then I see there's a, and obviously this, this probably goes to the resource versus curriculum part, but the disparity between grade A total days, hundred forty-three versus grade six, hundred sixty days.
Yep, so not all lessons take just one day. So oftentimes a lesson, take a day and a half.
True.
Or two days, or sometimes you could get through a lesson in like three quarters of a class period and then start the next one. And that's common in many curriculum area resources. I would say it's especially common in math and ELA. Good question. Yep, it means that there are some lessons that.
Thank you. So to clarify what Nick asked, you're not changing the curriculum, you're changing the resource to get you to, through the curriculum.
Correct, but in doing that, the purpose of buying a resource is so that teachers have the lessons. The warm-up activities, the practice problems. The lessons, the whole activities, the small group activities, the assessments for them in this resource. So you're purchasing a tool that allows teachers to have all of those things at your fingertips. Because as you can imagine, a build-your-own-curriculum, uh, situation takes a lot of time. So.
Last question.
Yeah.
Okay, obvious. Um, does anybody from the district go visiting schools using this resource at all to see how it's implemented or being pros, cons through other districts?
That's a very good question. We often do that in content areas. I would say that that has not been as common since COVID. Um, we always reach out to other districts to see that are using these resources. That's a super common question to publishers. All right, give me your top ten districts in Wisconsin or districts in Minnesota near us that are using this. Maybe are new to it, maybe have been using it a few years, so we can reach out to them. So we often reach out to districts that are similar to us in size, maybe in some of their demographics. Um, I'll just give the example of Portonville. They're a district that we often reach out to. They are model PLCs school district in the state of Wisconsin, um, to get feedback from other districts. So we have not visited any for the math, but we've gotten feedback from other districts about the use of it. We did that for all four of the resources we were looking at.
So through Algebra One right now, and you said the remaining classes fall twenty five?
Geometry and Advanced Algebra would be fall of twenty five.
So that doesn't support all of the math classes that we have?
Correct. Precalculus and Calc are typically not included in like what publishers sell for like high school math courses. We usually have to go to more college publish, college textbook publishers for resources for those classes.
So what's the timeframe on those classes then?
Neither of those courses are Calc, which is A, B and B, C, and B, C, are in need of a new resource at this moment. Those are courses that we typically adjust based on resources, based on what we're seeing if anything new comes out from AP. Um, and I, that was true for other content areas as well.
So they're not on the same seven-year rotation?
They are if they would happen to need resources at the same time. But I often leave a few of those higher-level classes as we fit those in as the need arises. So they might get, we might need to look at those a year or two from now in, in combination with whatever else is being looked at that year. The last thing I'll just say, because I know we have some newer board members, is, um, uh, our policy in our district is that the school board approves a curriculum resource that we're using, not necessarily the purchase of the resource. So if you wanted any information about like the cost of this resource, I could provide that or bring more details next week. But I just wanted you to know that's why that's often not in the action item, because your job as a board is to approve the curriculum resource. Not necessarily the purchase. I hope that makes sense.
The use of.
Yeah, the use of it.
So we got Dave for.
Hey, 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 okay, sorry. Um, so I was digging a little more on the website. Um, because when I was going through the link that you sent me, there's not a lot of discussion around like equity. What was the makeup of the folks, um, that developed this, um, resource? Um, but then I did find an executive summary that they have. And they went through, um, they had five different particularly, um, groups that were focused on equity. And particularly engaging all students in the classroom, particularly, we know gender, um, is a big issue in attracting, uh, students into math. Um, and so it, I'm just. Wondering if this looks like these are additional sessions that they offer. And so it'd be great to know that anyone that would be using that would also check out those specific equity-focused, um, resources. They had webinars on here too. Like, I know people don't always like those, but, um, it's just not shown in the resources that you gave us at all, and that was a concern for me, to be honest.
Um, oftentimes what comes up in our training package, this is what publishers usually offer, is you get your initial implementation training. And then you kind of get an a la carte of like some other topics that might be important to your district as they align with your mission, vision and goals, strategic plan, et cetera. Um, so, you know, making sure that you're looking at this through an equity-based lens might be one of the a la carte additional trainings that we could do. Virtual or in person on our staff development days. That's usually where some of those additional trainings come up. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, Crystal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. All right, informational items, we have one, two, three, four.
And actually Kate is stuck in an airport, so I'm gonna ask if we can move her item until next week.
Nope, zoom in.
Yep.
Not be able to.
There could be a crying baby out there.
Yeah. They're grown man.
Informational items.
Yeah.
Twelve people on the list. This is gonna be good. Air Leathers. Wendy Bender, Aaron Fezzi, Caitlin. They drop you up, exactly. Karen Filet, secondary standard-based grading, base grading update. How about it?
I can't learn how to leave and lay them blind.
Is this the most amount of people that, that wants? I don't think so.
Where's that? Slave set. Okay, uh, we're jumping right in. So some celebrations at the middle school. I think we're kind of together on this. So, um, consistency among teachers and grading student work. Teaching and learning is focused on truly learning the standards, not just those isolated skills. Uh, students are more aware of how they're progressing with standard and community knowledge. Uh, between standards and providing multiple attempts to master the standards.
I'd say just some of the things, uh, one of the major things that have been done here over the last few years. Uh, we've seen a significant graduation rate improvement. Uh, our four-year graduation rate in, in the two thousand nineteen, um, was eighty-four percent, which had us ranked three hundred and sixty-four out of three hundred and seventy-eight high schools in the state of Wisconsin.
That's about a five percent.
Yeah, over, uh, over the last three, uh, over the last three years. Uh, we've seen a, a steady increase, uh, into the mid nineties and we anticipate, uh, that number will be in the upper nineties. For here, for the class of, um, twenty twenty-four. Uh, some of the goals, uh, you know, that we set around, um, our strategic plan at our goal, at our building level. I was looking at the increasing the number of courses passed. Written kind of in a negative, because that's the way we tracked our data. About twenty percent fewer students failed the class. Um, semester one of this year versus, uh, the average of semester one and two, um, of last year. Uh, we're trending fairly similar in, uh, the second semester here. We've got a few more days of that. Um, our teachers are collaborative teams, uh, within the PLC model. Uh, you know, I have dug more in, uh, and I think we're seeing improvements in different. occasions. Uh, I think we're seeing more and more classes develop what the four is and, and provide extension activities and, and push students beyond. Uh, and I think, you know, we're seeing then, uh, a unified grading practice, um, within a course, you know. So it doesn't look different from, uh, one teacher of, you know, one teacher of Algebra Two, two that is.
Uh, some of the challenges that we're seeing, am I doing both?
Yeah.
No, man.
I'm Wendy Bender, for anyone in the room that doesn't know me. I've been with the district for twenty-four years. Um, we at the male school know that there are continued challenges around standards-based grading. But, um, I'm not gonna read those. I'm, I know you can all read them. The thing I feel like I need to say here is in the opening comments, one of the things that was said was that we've been standards-based grading for three years. I realize that that's where we changed from letter grades to one, two, three, four systems at high school. But I have been a part of standards-based learning, teaching and grading since my first year in this district. Um, when I was a brand-new teacher, the district was in the process of, um, putting steep teachers who wanted to go through training and really understand standards-based learning and standards-based grading. And I volunteered to be a part of, um, a few of the trainings at that time. And then that led me to being able to be a part at the elementary level, um, to be a part of a committee that um, helped to develop the standards-based grading for the elementary level. I have taught both elementary and middle school. When I moved to the middle school, that same year, um, we were told that standards-based grading was going to transition to the middle school. So for me, it was natural, because I had been a part of it for five years at the elementary level. And having said that it was natural, I will tell you, I was a skeptic at first. I really dug into the difference between traditional, um, based grading versus standard space. And I feel like what we need to, um, make sure we understand is though there are challenges. I hope this district never goes back to traditional in the sense of how it was very subjective. How it was very different from classroom to classroom. Um, I feel like we have work that still needs to be done around the challenges that are here. But I also feel we have to continue to celebrate the fact that we are evolving where we understand the importance of standard proof-based learning. And to me, standards-based grading is then the natural next step. Um, if we're teaching in the classroom to the standards, we have to then also be communicating to students and parents and all stakeholders, administration, community, how their meeting of those standards is, and how they're doing with that. And so I just really feel like that is an important piece for the board to. And so I just really feel like that is an important piece for the board to understand. Um, I wasn't sure what I was gonna say. But yeah, um, with those challenges, I think it's super, super important for you to understand that this is um a process that's been going on for twenty-four years. And I think we do need to keep coming around the table and figuring out how we get better at working on those formative pieces. Um, for example, one of the things I can share at the middle level, our math eight teachers this year, we tried to take a different look at formative assessment and we, as we were moving through a unit, um, we said, you know, we really are at a summative here. We kept calling it formative, but we've been working on this for two weeks. These kids should know this. And so for us, this piece of the standard is now summative. And what we started to do was look at how we could have multiple pieces of the standard represented in multiple pieces of work. Um, so that when we got to the end, that summative piece was reflective of several different artifacts. And that is just something that started this year for my math eight team. Um, because as we looked at that formative piece and how we were really disturbed by the students who were not giving us the formative, we were looking at how we could change that and we found some success with that. And so that's just one example of where I do agree, we need to get around the table and continue to work. But I certainly hope we continue to grade according to the standards because that's what we teach for the standards.
I love that idea. So who initiated like, let's talk about this. Where did that come from?
I happen to be the math eighth leader and I was the one that was frustrated. And I was working with two brand-new eighth-grade math teachers who were trying to wrap their head around their own experience as students and how homework was graded when they were students and how now we're not grading homework. And so last summer, um, after spending my first year working with those new teachers and feeling the same frustration they were, I just really started to wrap my head around it and I started to just dig back into the resources that I have on standard-based grading and learning. And I brought some of those materials to our team and we just chose to spend our year with our SLO, trying to get better at that.
Thank you.
Before we enter into many more, if there are questions and stuff, let's, let's have the group finish their presentation.
Uh, no. I mean, I, I could read those to you, but I feel like you could read us as well.
So one big thing that, that we hear pretty consistently is like, oh, standard-based grading is easier, right? Oh, I can just, I can just do the summative work. Uh, I just wanna get a one, that kind of thing. Um, and that's, that's just not the case. Like, all, all of my students, um, uh, my name's Kyle Shers, by the way. I'm a special ed teacher. I also, I do a lot of co-teaching in the ELA department. Um, so in, in my role, I get to see how things are when I'm supporting students um that, uh, students I manage, um, their IEPs. I get to see them, uh, their science work. I get to see their math work. I get to help them in social studies. Um, you know, some of those things I'm better at than others, but uh, but it, it truly is, uh, it's, it's better for all of our students because we have, we have these kids who, it's like, all right, so I met that level one, now how do I get that, how do I get that grade raise? I had that exact same conversation with a kid today. You know, last week at school, he got his, he uh, got his grade on his last summative. And he sat down with me and he said, can you, can you look at this? Can, can you help me get a better grade on this? Um, so it's things like that that are super meaningful. And then also, uh, kind of going back to being able to push our more higher, our higher achieving students to get to that level four. Um, I have those conversations all the time after we, after we get, give them a CFA, after we give them a uh, a formative work, summative work, whatever it is. We have kids who wanna get that level four. And that's amazing to see that they want to try. They already got an A. They're not trying to get necessarily better, like, grade point average. It's that they wanna do better on the work. And I feel like that feedback is a lot more meaningful than, yep, you got a nine out of ten. Say, what does that mean? You know, so we can actually sit down, have these conversations, give them written documentation on, okay, here's what you need to improve on with your writing or, or whatever it might be. Um, the, the consistency as well, the PLC model is fantastic, being able to sit down with our other teachers, uh, teaching the same classes. We're on the same schedules. It can be really, it can be a lot easier. Um, if you have a student who needs to change their schedule uh halfway through the year or however it might be. Um, uh, for my students, if there's a change to their IEP, they need to move to a different teacher, if they need a co-talk class, whatever that might be. We can, we can facilitate that much easier because we know that the other teachers are teaching, they're getting at the same standards. Now, we're not doing the exact same things. For all the different teachers, we have a certain level of autonomy. But we get to meet and really discuss how we can get at these standards in the best way. Um, but I think really like one of the biggest challenges that we see is that communication is really people read words and interpret things differently. You know, as, as an English teacher, we do a lot of analysis and people take different things from, from the way people say things all the time. Um, and that can be really difficult because we all have, we grew up in that traditional grading. So we have a lot of parents who are like, well, this doesn't make any sense. Um, and so there, there maybe people are, are reading the words and they're not truly understanding or engaging with what we're saying. Um, they're resisting because, yeah, obviously change is really difficult. Um, you guys saw that I haven't closed a school this year. Like, it takes a long time. And we've done a, a really good job of keeping up to date with the struggles of standards-based grading. Uh, communication between districts and schools, um, communication between our own districts and, and other teachers. Um, we've done so much of the hard work and obviously there's more to come. Change, change is hard and it takes time. Like, people, people will learn if we keep this going. And I know that our students, students are learning better. Like, we're able to teach them better. They're learning more. They have more success. And I mean, the, the data doesn't lie. So I feel like that, that biggest challenge is that it's just, it's, it's hard to change. That's a really tough thing.
Um, I'm Robin Reckon. I teach sixth-grade science at the middle school. So I benefit from the hard work that the elementary does because our sixth graders are still elementary-minded. Uh, they wanna please, they wanna please, okay, not all of them. A lot of them wanna please their parents, wanna please the teachers. Um, so convincing them to redo something or convincing them to push from that one to a two, from a two to a three, I think it maybe is easier for us. I mean, and sometimes it takes a request from a, you know, a teacher like, this again, or from a parent, uh, could you get me to look at this again? It's like, yeah, I, sometimes they need that external motivation to really internalize it. Um, so, and I do a lot of, I, since someone asked me to be here, I've been doing a lot of thinking about my own kids who went through a district that does not do standards-based grading and thinking about their GPAs and when they came home with a B on the report card or an A on the report. Whatever. It's like, yeah, I'm, I'm proud of them, but what do they need to work on? What, what are they doing well? Um, how can I help them achieve more? And I think standards-based grading helps us do that better as a district. Um, so I mean, yeah, there are things we need to do, improving communication to families. What is a one, two, three, four? Um, communication within our team. We need to make sure we're all on the same page with what a one, two, three and four looks like. Um, and the formative feedback, um, it's time-consuming. So how are we providing feedback to our students? And how are we letting families know how we're doing?
And that's probably for the middle school, the biggest challenge. When you look at those two pieces, we're getting better at that formative feedback because our administration has taken us through lots of training and expectation building around that. And so we're getting better at that formative feedback with students. Um, but when we were talking and preparing to come and present to you, one of the things we did talk about is probably need to fine-tune the communication to families, to the parents about what that feedback looks like and how their students are hearing things in the classroom and how they're connecting those pieces. And so I think that's definitely a next step for the middle school. And the middle school has been doing this longer than the high school. We've been standards-based grading for a lot of times.
Yeah, I think, you know, communication-wise, uh, is, it's, it's more time-consuming. It, it is tougher, but I think to kind of echo on what Robin said, it can be more, a lot more accurate. Um, and eighty-five percent as a parent, as a student, okay, I've got a B, that's all right. I can move forward with that. I feel good about that. What, what does that mean? It means somehow in some combination of their tests and their homework, they did enough of it to earn eighty-five percent of the credit. It doesn't tell you what their level of proficiency is based on a standard. Um, that is harder to communicate. It's harder to communicate out to families. Um, we've talked, you know, in our group, we've talked to the shared leadership team about, you know, when we, in implementation, you know, there were a lot more family sessions and, and opportunities uh, to, to talk to, you know, educate and talk to the community about what this means and what it looks like. Um, and I think we gotta get better and get back, we're gonna get back with that. Uh, I think we're looking at everything from our, you know, our our data management systems to, you know, to the protocols that we use within our own classrooms to uh, to do a more effective, more effective job on that. Um, you know, speaking of research and things, you know, that was, um, that was brought up earlier, you know, grading, a grading system, the intention of a grading system isn't, and you're not gonna find research studies out there to say this grading system has smarter kids or higher achieving kids. A grading system is to, is to communicate where, where a student's level of performance is. Well, you will see a ton of research on, you know, the impacts of student learning is, is feedback. And, and what that formative feedback looks like, you'll see a ton of research on goal setting. So, okay, we've got that formative feedback now, a matter of one, a matter of two, what does that look like to get to a three? Two of the more, most impactful things in education are good feedback and then the students having the opportunity to take that feedback, talk with their teachers, set a goal and, and plan as to how they're going to improve that. Um, you know, that is, that's where the power comes from. The power comes from the PLC, getting their head around what is essential and what does, can we agree on, okay, what that looks like to meet that standard and having those conversations, which then leads into, oftentimes leads into changes in instruction because, well, maybe we weren't, maybe we weren't actually asking them to do everything to the standard. Maybe our assessment didn't actually provide them the opportunity to get all the way to the standard because it wasn't asking a, a high enough level of difficulty or depth of knowledge. So those, those conversations are what drive, you know, what drive the power of things, you know? Whether you call it a one, two, three, a four, an A, B, C or D and eighty-five percent, that doesn't, that doesn't impact student learning. And I don't think anybody's the biggest standards-based grading, Thomas Guski was standing before you, he wouldn't tell you standards-based grading is gonna make your students do better in school. He, he wouldn't say that because that's not, that's not the argument. That's not the purpose. Uh, what he would say is if you follow the PLC process in which boatloads of research would tell you, if you follow the PLC process, uh, you get really clear, super clear about what a student needs to be able to know, understand and do. Uh, you tailor your instruction to that, you provide them feedback based on their levels of attainment and then set goals and, and continue to work towards it, you see the most impactful results in education. So, um, that's, that's where the power is.
Yeah, to piggyback on that a little bit, with the communication thing, like, we hear a lot of times like, okay, are, are we really preparing our kids for the real world? Are we preparing our students for college? If you look at the type of feedback that we give, it's in, in standards-based grading, it's much more aligned with what you see in a university. You have, a lot of times you have a midterm and you have a final, right? So if you're not doing that formative work along the way, those things are gonna be really difficult for you. Uh, it's the same thing in, in any job. You're getting feedback from your boss or your manager, uh, at least in a yearly review, um, in, in most cases. And um, you can't make up for things that you did by submitting extra credit in a job, right? Like, extra credit doesn't exist in college. So I think those are really important things that can be, I don't know, they can be difficult to communicate, but I, as, as I keep having conversations with students and parents, they're starting to learn that more. So, yeah.
Questions?
That's a stupid thing to ask.
Alright, thanks guys. A question.
I don't know that there's so many, oh, questions, but um, just some feedback. I really appreciate that Wendy, you acknowledged that there's things that need to be fine-tuned, worked on. Um, and I'm hoping that that's where we can all come together as a team to figure out how we can make this the best it possibly can be. Um, because again, we need to do what's best for kids and our teachers. Um, and so I do think that the formative is one of those challenges that is commonly brought up by many teachers and parents even. Um, and I like that solution that you brought up and, and I hope that maybe more teachers can come to that and hear these things too. Um, that maybe we can implement.
Didn't walk into any more work here. Aaron tends to put me to work when I share a good idea. I'm sorry.
That's all right. That's all right. Um, and I do agree. I mean, I've said it since the beginning that there are positives and negatives to every grading system. Um, traditional has good things and bad things and SBG has good things and bad things. And so that's why if we can kind of mesh a little more or make some compromises and some changes, um, I think it can be a, a good thing. Um, I don't wanna talk the entire time. So I'll wait to bring up some others if the other board members don't, but I, thank you for bringing up some of the challenges as well and recognizing them. So.
Before, before we really dive in this, I, I just wanna say, you know, in the last couple of years, same time we have, I guess disagreement on topics. Discussion tends to go a certain way. I really don't want any of this discussion to be us against them, teachers against sad men, board against whoever. I, I don't want any of that stuff. Um, I've been wanting to have a, a true discussion on the topic, whether you're for it or against it. I don't care. I wanna have the discussion. And um, so I don't want any of this, no matter what I say or anybody else says up here, to become a us versus you.
Kind of interrupt. I'm sorry.
Sure.
We feel very supported by our administration at the middle school.
Yes.
I know the high schools.
Um,
I'm just.
Thank you.
Um,
Us versus us.
Yeah, I lost my thought, but.
Well played.
I, I need to finally say something.
Well, you did. We've all had the opportunity to have discussions with Amy, Crystal, um, Crystal Fezzi. Um, not as a board, but as individual groups. So this, this particular board has not had any discussion in its entirety about SBG. And so it's something we've really wanted. Um, within that discussion, you know, I, I can personally, you know, concede that SBG might be around. Probably gonna be around for the long haul. Um, and I'll be honest, I'm not an SBG fan. I can concede that it's here. It's probably gonna stay around, right? Um, I do see a lot of the pros. Uh, but I also see a lot of cons. And what I'm hoping is, you know, I was glad to see some challenges listed up there. But I, but I think in the grand scheme of SBG and this discussion, I think we kind of maybe missed the mark a little bit on what some real challenges are with SPG versus, you know, communication with parents or just there being change and change being hard. I think there's more serious challenges than those. Challenges of how do we get our students to engage more? How do we, how do we put the education from the lessons in front of them so that they retain it for the future? How do the, how do we give them the values that they're going to need through college and through the workforce? And I think I forgot your name. I'm sorry.
Kyle?
Yeah.
You know, I heard you list list off some of that stuff, and I think fundamentally, when you're just talking about SPG in and of itself, it's got a great platform. It's got a great springboard, to say, I guess. But are we actually getting there with what we're doing? Is it actually rolled out the way it should be? You know, when I, when I hear about one through fours, you know, I I would question if you brought a teacher from every elementary school. Say a third grade teacher from every elementary school, would every teacher tell me a one through four has the same standard, the same criteria to get a one through four? Or would there be differences among all those teachers? Because they're in different buildings. They're not communicating every day with each other. Again, they get together, do communicate, but not every day.
But I think one of the things you heard from them today is there's more consistency now and similarity among teachers who team to teach the same content than there ever was under traditional grading because the standards are the basis for what they grade on.
I think and traditional had that same challenge of not being consistent across the board.
And now the standards are what ground us.
Right.
And so what brings me to say that is I hear different stuff amongst staff. You know, I got two kids in the district. I hear things, but you know, I hear some, some staff tell me a four is a unicorn. It's hard to get. It's not something you dish out. And I have other class, others, other staff. You know, yeah, four, every, you know, yeah, it's not a unicorn. This is this, this is the standard. This is how we get to it. You know, so I, that's just one little example of my mind and my, my viewing where I think there's a disconnecters. Not every, not every teacher and every grade level is, I guess, on that same standard or that same belief as to when to give this grade versus that grade.
I think on that, on that level, with the level four, like, again, it's that language difference where it's like, what does a unicorn mean to you? Well, unicorns don't exist, right, as far as we know. But then you have that little bit of language where it's like, it's unicorn. It's really hard to get. So in that sense, it is achievable. But then you have this other teaching saying, teacher saying, well, yeah, every student can do this if they follow the progression of the standard, if they follow the progression of the unit and they apply themselves. Any student should be able to get to that level four. Whether or not they're going to apply themselves to get that. I mean, again, it's no different than traditional grading. Not all of your students are going to do all your work or do all the problems or whatever.
So in that sense, a true challenge of SPG is the communication across the entire district. The most staff to know exactly when I'm teaching this, this is how the students attain this. And that should be the same at Cooper, Bryant, or Farmers, Great Lakes.
Each thing specifically around fours or all each?
Any, any standard, any grade, any grade.
Some teachers say a two is average and some say a two is below average. And so we have to get on, and I say we as a district, have to get on kind of that same page. And again, these are things that we can work through. Like if we acknowledge that there are challenges behind, it's not something that we can't overcome. But we just need to recognize and acknowledge that we're not quite all there, I don't think.
I do think, yes. I do think that it's super important to just piggyback around to remembering that change does take time. Remember, I shared that I've been twenty-four years in this district and a part of this evolution. And when we started working in PLCs, what, five years?
Longer than that.
Longer. Has it been? I think, I think, but I think probably five or six years ago was when the PLCs really felt like they were working and functioning as a PLC. Because for the first few years that we were with our PLCs, we were going through that evolution of understanding the difference between just we're all math eight teachers and we're coming together to put our lessons together versus we're a PLC and we need to, we need to be looking at data and we need to be letting it inform our instruction. And we need to be looking at how do we go and get these tier two kids and build something in the classroom so that they missed it on this assessment and we can go back and work with them while the others are working on something different. And so I feel like that's probably why I feel like I've been a part of a really functional, strong PLC for about five years. And having said that, I've had turnover on the math eighteen for the last four years. And so we're continually bringing a new teacher in. And yet even with that, we are feeling functional and strong because we're evolving with what we understand PLC is. And that's a huge part of standards based grading, is having those strong PLCs. My PLC meets three times a week. We have to meet at least once. But we choose to take prep time and meet because we are finding the impact that it's having on our students. And so I, I I can't say I'm for traditional and I can't say I'm standards based. I am for good, solid instruction that grades represent. And I don't care what they are. You can have a maybe C, one, two, three.
I have one of you kind of talked to, I think one of the things we heard tonight, one of the things I continue to hear over the course of the year is that we should be allowed to grade formative assignments.
Can you talk about why that doesn't necessarily, why that isn't necessarily an easy solution?
Well, first of all, first of all, assessment is supposed to be about informing, about letting us know where the person is at at that moment. So if I have just done a lesson and I give a ticket out the door to see what the students got out of that lesson on that day, and there's one or two problems that they have to solve, that's formative. It's giving me feedback as a teacher on if what I presented to them, what I had them go to the board and worked on, what I put them in groups to do, if it was effective and if they walked away meeting the objectives that I had. That's formative. I would never want to put that in a grade book because that is informing me if I'm doing my job well as a teacher or if I need to go back and say, oh, wait a minute. Twenty of them did not get that problem right. Only four of them did. I got to go back and look at how I missed the boat. And I have to tomorrow be prepared for us to look at a different strategy. Or I need to maybe go and talk to my colleagues and say, hey, how did it go in your room? Is there something you did differently? And that's what we do in our PLC time. And for us, that's what formative is.
So there are students who just flat out don't do it, though, then not giving you the feedback that you need as a teacher. And I don't know if that's the same across the board, but I have teachers that say they just do it. They'll just flat out ask, is this formative or summative? And then won't complete it. And I, I completely agree with you and what you're saying. It's feedback for me as a teacher and to review and to know what I need to do. But are are these kids doing that? Or are they?
I don't get a lot of information about that specific topic, but it's going to engagement and connection in school. And the last few years, that's been a challenge. It's got nothing to do with grading. We've been fighting that the last two years at the middle school. Our attendance was terrible. The things that we do in our building, the things that we do in our classroom impact a lot of things. But but coming, coming to school every day and being engaged is going to fix that problem. The problem coming out of COVID is kids had an out. They had an out. Teachers had an out too. We, we, we had to stay home for ten days if we had a cough. Like we had an out. And we are not coming, we're not fully back from COVID. I mean, we're working really hard to fix that. I don't know if you can say one thing is that to the other. I think it's all because of where we were last four years.
And I think I just want to say I've noticed two things personally, and this is from a parent perspective, but also other people I've been listening to is yeah, that exactly what you're talking about. My son will come home and say, well, we all pretty much failed this thing, so the teacher is going to do something different tomorrow. Yeah, that's the point is that they learn, right? It's not like, oh, and now you're all getting an F or whatever we would have done. And then the second thing is, shit, excuse my language. You were talking about, you know, the truancy issue and not showing up, right? When my son is gone or when my son is missing multiple formatives, I have, he has amazing teachers that will say, hey, Manix hasn't turned in the last two or three formatives. And that's when as a caretaker, and I know not every family has that. But and I know that's a lot of time for teachers, but thank goodness that happens. And if we get better at teaching our caretakers how to look at Power School or look at the formatives that are missing or reach out and say, is my son missing formatives? If we can teach that that's okay engagement, then parents are a part of that solution too, or grandparents or whoever they're living with. That is going to help with getting those formatives. So it's like a three prong approach, right?
To that, to that point, again, like I'll reiterate, we had plenty of students, maybe not plenty, but obviously our most at risk students don't, aren't going to hand in their work if it's graded or not. Like if it, if it's summative, if it's whatever, if it's traditional grading. What, what this helps us do is it normalizes, again, that feedback, that communication. Because that's where we're, we want to sit down and talk to our students of what they, what they can improve on. So in those conversations, we can also say, hey, I noticed you haven't turned in the last few assignments, last few formatives, how, whatever language you want to use for it. We can sit down and be like, what's, is something going on? Like, hey, like, is something going on at home? Or did you, like, I don't know, I have, I teach juniors and seniors, so maybe they, they lost a job or maybe they need to find a job or there's all these outside life things that happen that we can have those conversations. And this gives us an opportunity to actually sit down and talk with them rather than give them a number.
Right.
Is there?
There's, you, you deal with a smaller percentage of students, as you, as you mentioned, that probably wouldn't turn in that work regardless of which grading system we were using. But then now are we, and again, this is maybe rhetorical question, but so they aren't turning in their work here and they wouldn't either way. But now do we have a larger percentage of the bulk of the students that are not now turning in homework per se and keeping up with that portion of it? And so I just want to make sure that.
Anecdotally, I would say no, no.
I haven't seen a huge difference.
Okay.
And but a part of it, I, and it's interesting because I even asked two of my eighth grade classes when I was coming here, I go, for some reason, Mr. Levers thinks I should go talk about student-based grading. I'm still not sure why. But I said to them, there's always this topic of formative versus summative. And most of you do your work in here. Why? And the students that were willing to speak up in the classroom, because I just kind of did a quick as part of our wrap up, the, the things that I found interesting were, well, one, you like to try to like just tell us, we don't have a choice. But two, when they got real serious, they said, you really help us to understand that it's meaningful. And I asked them how. And they said, well, when you put those I can things on the board and when you show us the slide that says this homework, this homework, this homework is going to help you with this piece of a standard. And so that came from our students. And I know I'm only one person and I don't think I have all the answers, but I was trying to get feedback from them because I've not seen a huge difference between when I was giving ABCs and when I had to switch to giving one, two, threes, and fours.
If I can be honest, it's very difficult as a board member because we hear perspectives on both ends. It's really challenging to try to figure out, there must be like maybe a, a middle ground here because we have polarizing viewpoints of both. And again, I just want to come together and make it the best that it can possibly be and try to help all of our teachers and students get to a point where we're all happy and on the same page or the bind is there. And I don't know how to do that.
Is there a specific plan, speaking of that? Is there like a plan to address teacher concerns in high school, middle school? Because, you know, several people spoke today. We got several emails over the last few days. So is there a plan to address challenges specifically, creating action items, addressing those concerns or meeting with those teachers to talk about what their concerns are, what we can do to address them and brainstorm?
There's two things that come to my mind. You guys can. One is I think we're hearing different things from parents than we are from teachers. I think some of the things we heard tonight and some of the emails that were received is around that formative question. Grading formative of work is no longer standard based grading. So for me, that's not an option on the table. I think what we're trying to do with our shared leadership team is figure out how do we do some of the good work that Wendy just described to make sure kids are completing that formative assessment, knowing it's important for that summative assessment? I think the other thing we've talked about in the last few weeks is addressing some of those parent concerns. One of the things I think is really important, Sarah, you kind of helped highlight that, is you weren't really paying attention necessarily when some of that information went out to parents when we first implemented this at a high school level. Now you have students there and you're like, oh, wait, now I need to kind of understand what this means and how, how does this impact a letter grade? And I think we need to be much better at educating our parents every year, not just in initial implementation. And I also think we as a, as a district and working with our teachers, figuring out how can we improve our communication on a day to day basis where our families understand what the student received on a formative and what they need to get, either to improve that or to improve a summative. I think, I think you guys do an amazing job communicating those things to kids. I think sometimes translation is the last one. It goes to the parents. And so as a parent myself, we want to be able to put our kids accountable to getting a three and four. And we have a hard time being able to guide those conversations because we don't know what that is. And so we have to do a better job as a district of explaining to families what they need to do to get a better grade and opportunities that are available.
So, okay, so the teachers that have concerns that either wrote us emails or spoke tonight, they're just, their concerns and we're not addressing them or helping them through.
I think the specific question is if we're going to grade formative assessments, then we're no longer doing standard based grading. And I guess I'm looking at you guys. I mean, that's.
Wendy, Wendy just described a formative that went to a summative.
In fact, I can't speak to emails because I didn't see them.
You moved formative work into summative.
Because it was, it was assessing the standard.
One thing that happened.
Right. Yeah. So I can't speak to emails that I haven't read, but what I can say is we have, we have our shared leadership team built its entire year, our professional development around engagement, teacher concerns, they're not doing their formative work. So we had, that's where our professional development time was spent this year, led by our teachers who volunteered and say, hey, I may not have it all figured out, but this is working. Come take a look, come take a look at this. You know, continuing to, to expand on those, on those things. So, you know, like I said, I can't speak to various specific grievances or concerns, but I can say we are, we are addressing. We've made, Kyle referenced the change to two point five. The Spartan grade that went away was, was based on the feedback of, of our staff at the high school who didn't feel it was meaningful than it was, than it was at the, like it was at the middle school or lower, or at lower levels. So, you know, those adjustments, those concerns, you know, things, things that can be, can be tweaked and stick within a realm of standards based grading, those conversations are happening and responses to those are occurring. You know, to, to reference what Amy said, if you, if we say we're going back to great informative work, we have traditional grading. It may be a little better aligned to the standards than it was ten years ago because we put a focus on standards aligned on. But you don't have standards based grading. You have traditional grading, you know. However, you decide to weigh out the calculus of what's worth what. When you're grading the practice, when you're grading, when you're grading the check ins along the way, you have, you have a stamp, some form of more traditional.
Because you're no longer grading the standard anymore. You're grading the work. And so you're assessing whether the child recommends to be off the back, right? And so at that point, you're no longer grading on a, on a standard anymore. You're grading on a point scale.
I think to a level, any difference can take in a certain model. This particular case is grading, but it could be a model on something else. And that's the basic. And a district can take that model, tweak it for what works for our district. Because what works here might not be the same in Northwestern or Solon or any. Because what works here might not be the same in Northwestern or someone or anywhere else around here. And when we talk about formative, you know, I think of it, formative and summative as a race. You know, it's want formative, which would be running the race and the summative is getting past that finish line. And what I seem to, it seems to be is we have an option. Well, if I, if I say you don't have to run the race, but you can still cross the finish line, how many people are going to choose that versus running, running the race? I, I mean.
Well, if you, I mean, if you can cross the finish line, if you can, in your analogy, if you can get to a level three without doing any of the work, then good on you. You, I mean.
You understand.
You get what we're trying to tell.
You know what? I get, I get what you're saying.
I would say ninety, sorry, like ninety-nine percent of the time, even with our most high-achieving students, that's not the case. Like they're, yeah. If, if I, if I give a kid a summative, uh, in the first week of a unit and they knock it out of the park, I mean, that's, that's great, but that's, I don't know that that's ever happened in, in my.
I, I get, I get what you're saying there, but I do think that there's students per se, you know, I'm going to give an example of my own child, okay? And I'm not going to listen.
Classroom, whatever, what? She took a test, didn't do very good, okay? Um, she retook it, got a higher score, she felt like she was, she was good with that number.
But I asked her, I said, what did you get, what did you get wrong? What were you not understanding that you got discord again with? I don't know.
Okay, so how did you get a better grade?
Well, I just remembered what I put on the first test and I changed a few answers and I got a higher score the second day. And that was, that was okay for her. It's not okay for me and we've had this discussion, you know? Um, but I, I, I don't think it's primarily, you've taken a summative, you're a very intelligent child. You don't need anymore. I, I do think there's students that are like that, but I do think there's a chunk of students that aren't necessarily getting to the end in that, in that particular way. And that's, and that's what I'm saying is that's a challenge, that's a true challenge that I see of the SPG is that there are students, my own included, that are seeing the easy way and willing to take that easy way. Now, hopefully I corrected that with my one child, but nonetheless, again, I think that's a true challenge. And so my goal is for like these discussions, these talks is that we can truly come together on both sides. Yeah. I mean, we're listening to, um, horrible Wendy, right? Okay, um, who's, who's had many more years with SPG coming from elementary, um, in a middle school. And for the record, I really don't feel like SPG talk is really a big problem for the elementary school. Feel like it's more affecting middle and the high school right now. Um, but in retrospect, we also have twenty-plus teacher, twenty-plus year teachers that are having issues and having problems that are, I think, need to be addressed. And I think we need to be able to concede both sides, concede, we got this model we need to work with. Okay. But we also need to concede that we do have real challenges, real problems with the way it's going and how kids are, are learning or being assessed or getting, getting that finish line.
I think what I'm asking is that you don't lose the foundation and the philosophy of why you made the change. We can make lots of adjustments.
But I feel like there's a lot of these topics sort of of concern or stuff that if we actually sat down and talked them and actually came up with true, um, answers on how to fix them and spread that out amongst the district, I think we could fix a lot of problems.
Is there, would there be a way to do, to get the kids to do formative work without grading it? Like, is there a way to do that?
I have no way.
Well, there, there are ways. It does take, there are ways as our team is doing it. We, you know, we've chosen to be a team that this is the decision that's been made as a whole. And so instead of being naysayers, we're just going to delve in.
How do we make that universal? Like, how do we make that successful across the board?
And I, I do believe that we do need to do more training around this. I think that we've had initial standards-based training so that people can understand the big picture of it. But I do think we need to delve into helping, um, teachers who feel like they are out there floundering and struggling, um, where they can be given like some of the tangible examples of what some PLCs are doing, where they're finding success with the formative in an ideal world. I wish we had, um, a technological system that allowed us to report to parents that I gave your child this formative and they got a two. And right, because I don't think this is an issue of being able, I, I told you, and I joked with Crystal the other day, but I said, if we go back to the subjectivity of traditional grading and if we go back to punishing our kids because they are not getting it with the stepping stones along the way, it'll be time for me to retire. And I feel like I still have a lot of teaching opportunities, even though age-wise I can retire. I choose to stay because I feel I'm making a difference, but I also feel like the kids are learning with me. And so in, in that ideal world, I think we do need to do more training. Um, I also think that we need, I'm glad Amy's working on that system because that communication piece, um, to students and to parents, so that as a, a parent and a student can know, well, right now you're on a one and two weeks from now, we're taking a unit summative where you have to pull all the pieces together. We're going to performance, we're going to game time, you know, we're going to the semifinals. Right now, you're going to lose for this team and the team is you. And so if we can report those things in a better way and we do it, the students, they get it on their papers. But I know the eighth graders I teach do not haul those papers home to parents because I find them in the hallway. We find them shoved in the desks of my classroom. And so parents are not getting the feedback that their students are. And so I, I totally agree that those pieces need to be our, some of our huge big steps as a district. But I certainly hope that we will not deter you from going back to punishing our kids because they aren't mastering it when they're taking the stepping stones.
I think, I think a different perspective too, when you were talking about parental engagement and getting that stuff home is, I know you guys just dance on homework. I get it. All right. But homework does have a piece of parental engagement. It's.
Get some work every night.
I wish, I wish more would because I haven't seen a lick of homework in an entire year for any of my kids. Um, but, but what it does. But I, I think, I think certain formative, whether you're greater or not, and, and sending some of that work home, not only helps parents engage with their children and physically see and understand what they're learning and how to learn through it. It does help as a parent's understanding what is going on in the classroom. And, you know, I, I know Power School has that aspect. I've been on it. I think Power School is kind of garbage. I've had bad luck with Power School. Crashes on my phone all the time. Um, so I guess I can't truly access everything, but I, I think in the realm of that, those formative assignments, again, a different perspective is you are bringing a, and I get it, not every parent is going to engage with their kids. Not every parent's going to care what their kid is doing, but there are parents that do. And there are parents that want to understand. I don't want to be, you know, a parent with my kid, ask me a question like, you know, I got five sticks and I got six, six stones, let's do some math, you know, I don't know what the heck you're talking about. That's elementary stuff, I think, but, um.
Neither.
You know, but if I, if I had these assignments, if my kids had these things and brought them home and we could work through them together, I could understand it more. I can understand what they're doing in class. I could see how they're getting to that finish line. Um, you know, in that circumstance where my kid did not do well on her, on her summative test, I could probably understand or see why, um, because I'd be able to see that issue not working through the problem of whatever subject that is, you know? Um, and I could, I could have helped it better in that regard, as far, as far as a parent that does want to engage. Um, so I, I think that's a whole different perspective. I, I don't think I'm sitting here saying grade formative is great and fail kids or anything like that. But I do see, you know, when you talk about formatives, so what is the enticing value for a kid to do that? What is the enticing value if there is no outcome of it? You know, and.
There is a lot of outcome. And I, I, I think at sixth grade, we spend a lot of energy on, um, helping kids become, stop my words, um, internalizing that want and need to learn. Um, all right, go into Power School, look at your grades or you missed an assignment. I spend so much time getting them to look at it and encouraging them to, if you're missing an assignment, you need to figure it out. And you, because this assignment, it's, it builds, this is practice, this is practice. It's leading up to a summative. Um, if I do a quick and dirty formative assessment on the way out the door, yeah, it's not going in the grade book. That's to inform my instruction the next day. I put stuff in that probably shouldn't be in the grade book, don't tell me that's possible. But it's so that the kids in sixth grade, they start to see, oh, that's what I'm going to earn on the summative if this is the quality of work I trade. I, I think that we, that I'm speaking from a sixth grade perspective, which is very different junior, senior, high school perspective. These kids, I said it at the beginning, they want to please, they want to do well. They don't like to see, most of them don't like to see missing work. Um, but getting, getting them to see the benefit of doing the work is so challenging, but it's kind of in a teacher.
I had a very, like, same thing, like literally today, I had a kid come up to me and say, hey, Mr. Schirners, I got a, I got a three on this last, last summative. You know, like, I, I could do it because I actually did all of my formative work this unit, finally. It clicked with him. And I, you know, sometimes I hear that after the first unit or second unit or whatever, but to hear that, like with a kid who eventually truant, um, super bright, said, worked out one-on-one with them. He's got so many skills, but he's, you know, he can't show up the first, first hour of the day, so really tough for him. And he finally figured out, oh, if I just do this formative work, that's preparing me for the summative and then my life is way easier. I don't have to spend three days worrying about if I'm going to fail the class or if I'm not going to earn this credit, whatever that might be. He learned that lesson, like literally today, that.
Those are self-sufficiency skills that you need and colleges are moving towards like, you just do your work and then throughout the course, you get extended deadlines. You just submit it at some point and then you get a midterm and a final, like, that is not uncommon and we do need to find ways to motivate our students, whether that's through exper, experimental learning, um, being creative, which you are all doing in your PLCs. That's the way, and, and again, the parent aspect. And that's the way, if that's the issue, we got to solve that. But I, I think, I hope all the fellow board members on here understand that we don't have the expertise here to create our own model. Um, that would be based on research and research is really important. And I, I heard someone say that research has not been shared with them. Um, if that's true, um, you know, that's concerning. But I would bet if you go to your PLC group or your district leaders, school leaders, uh, y'all have that information, right? Erin and, yeah.
Research?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So we can get that and share that to people so they understand, because I did my own research. Um, running for school board, read plenty of articles. Um, and it, it's kind of a mixed bag, but the point is standardizing what we're doing. And that is something that our tradition, our past grading, uh, process did not do. I mean, to your point about, Ed, your, your daughter's experience, I was able to retake a test and did the same fricking thing and that was way before standards-based grading. Same test and just tried to memorize which ones I got wrong. That happens, like even in the outdated past grading standards. And I think when Brooke and Steve and I had our meeting, uh, to learn about it, we were like, hey, that, also that does happen, these issues in the traditional grading center, uh, grading system that we used to use. So different problems, some of the same problems. And if, again, we're trying to change something, that means we're not doing standards-based grading. Should all be able to agree to that.
I don't think changing something changes the whole grading system. I mean, that's, I think that's an oversight. Um, you're, I was, I was, I was coming in here and I'm sorry, you guys, like it feels like a grilling session. It's not that. I guess I don't feel like that. I'm sure it picks a hotter night.
Stand up for a while.
I don't know, it's something like that. I'm sorry. That feels like that. It sucks if you guys.
Because of time.
Like, because it, it, the hard part for me is it feels like you guys are standing up there trying to convince us of something that we shouldn't be convincing, right? Like that's the part I'm struggling with. Um, and in order to call, go back to some of your points, like, as far as the, the formative stuff goes, like, that's not real life though. Like some of the stuff you're talking about with doing work and then, you know, being, or not doing work and being more forward or getting across, that's not real life. And that's what I'm, 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 I'm not, you know, I'm just saying, because a lot of people have that view, right?
I think you're, you misunderstood some things that I said.
Well, I'm talking about like in, in the real workforce, even in colleges, they're doing, they're doing standard-based grading now. But like I told, you know, Amy and Crystal, like these college professors are struggling with the same, a lot of the same things that we're struggling with, the same ideas of like, you know, moving deadlines. Because, I mean, honestly, you get out in the real world, this, this stuff, the, it doesn't apply this way. Like this is great for a kid that's going to college, you know, but like then they get their art history degree and sorry, anybody has a hard history, a hard history degree, like what do you, what do you do when you get out in the real world with that? You didn't, you didn't have to do the work to get there, you know? You can take a test over five times. That, that doesn't happen in the real world.
What are you talking about? Everyone's real world experience is so different and I.
No, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. We're catering this.
Yeah, I was just going to finish that. That's saying. Change the formative process, it does change standards-based grading.
But we're saying like, if we make, if, if we make, I like a lot of things about the standard-based grading, I do. There's a lot of really advanced. I'm saying the reason that we're here, like having this discussion that you guys are in front of us is because it's come up a thousand times. Like the teacher survey, like we can say it's, the results aren't real or whatever from SFT or from last year. Like, but it's there, right? And that's why we're having this discussion. So clearly, uh, we need to, we need to talk more about this. We're not saying that we need vast overhauls here, but I think we're, I think it feels like if you guys say that we're making any kind of concession, that we're just like, the system's gone. Like, and I, I, I don't feel like that's fair.
No, I said, what I stated and I'll state it again, is if you're great formative work.
I, I understand that. I understand that. Yep, I understand that. But I'm, I'm saying like Wendy's brought up a lot of really good points. That stuff needs to be discussed more and I think it needs to be beyond just the, um, the SOP, is that right? I'm still learning the acronym. Like I, I, we did a task force years, a couple of years ago, I know with the behavior stuff. Um, that worked really well. I, I don't see a problem. Like I don't, it, it seems like we're scared of just having conversations. Even if you walked away from it and nothing changed, you had the conversations.
Yeah. I haven't had a, I haven't had anybody who approached me about standard-based grading in two years of it. This is the very first conversation that I've had. So I, I'm not saying that there's not people that don't have questions about it and I'm not saying that we shouldn't be talking more about it. I think, I think that these are yearly, um, discussions with our teams and, and, and how we can improve practices. Again, I'll go back to what, changing something on a grading practice is not going to fix our problems. Our kids are still struggling to come back to school and we got to do a number of things to get that right. So I, I, I'd like to wrap this up.
Yeah, I would like, I'm just saying, I, I would just like to have more discussion around this, not even action items.
Yeah.
For you guys, if you. That's exactly what we said is we want more. We want better communication. We want to work together. We want to make changes. We know it's not perfect. It's never been, it never will be, but we want to continue to improve it and we have.
And I do agree, like, I don't think this is something the boards should change. This is something that you guys, you guys are the educators. You're the, you're the ones there every day. I, I, I don't want to change anything. I just, I just would love to hear that there's discussions being had.
Sure.
You know, with different groups, with different dissenting or detractors in, in one way or the other. It doesn't feel like we're, we have that, that's all.
Sure. So if I can try to put quote here, that's if you don't mind.
I mean, for them, yeah, but can we still discuss? Because there's a couple of other things that have been brought up that I hope are on the radar of everyone, uh, you know, the amount of retakes, the amount of late work and deadlines, how late do we accept work? Are those things that you all can talk about as well to see where the challenges lie with teachers? So again, some teachers are saying when you have unlimited retakes, it adds so much more work to their plates and they can't keep on doing that. And if there's no incentive, like, if you don't have to do something to be able to retake it or have a conference with a teacher to be able to retake it. Again, it adds so much more to some teachers' plates. So I'm just bringing that up as maybe, uh, something to put on the radar to have more discussion around. Um, and then again, late work, fifteen to ninety days, I, somebody had quoted, uh, in one email, I mean, that's a long time. Are we, is that truly real life if it's that late? I mean, if you're gonna be that late in your deadlines at work, you're gonna be fired. So those kind of things can we talk about?
Absolutely, I think situations like that are typical, I don't know the specific habitual truancy.
Sure.
Kid shows back up, should we try to teach him or should we say, you failed the semester? I think is the question that we're trying to answer.
Yeah.
We need to answer at that point.
Is the kid in amber wing for a few months? I mean, like, we wanna talk about real world, every student's situation is different. Right? So we can't be like using our lens to say this is real, this is not real. Because obviously it's real for the kids.
And hopefully our adult teachers can take into account those kind of things that come up, that are not the norm or maybe situational. We have to be able to do that for our students.
So what Erin said is kind of a mouthful there, where kids have been given the out. And, and, and I think of even some of the regular students, you know, called them, regular students was not, not regular, a student. There are many out there that chose, no matter what grading system we have used over the years, they've chosen to disconnect, they've chosen to do the minimal. What we've seen a little bit, at least from what I'm hearing, what we're seeing a little bit more is that there seems to be more of this happening. As far as, um, guidelines and everything, there's, there's, there's teacher groups that worked on standards-based grading, late work guidelines.
Yep.
Maybe, maybe it needs to be reviewed, I don't know when this was developed, um, but it's there. Standard-based grading reassessment guidelines and instructions. So teacher groups got together and they put this together. Is it time to sit down and revisit?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, you know?
How old are these?
Uh, Crystal, how old are these, three years?
When we were implementing.
Yes. So.
Not a bad thing to reevaluate.
Communication and responsibilities, I've kept writing down here, but first of all, thank you. To stand up here and be, be vulnerable like this, I think it's amazing. I also wanna acknowledge the fact of our three guest speakers tonight, too. For you to stand before the board and express your concerns and we received emails from others and stuff, and that's our responsibility to read them.
Yep.
And then, as we're having this type of discussion, even though it's not a community-based discussion, um, we, that's our responsibility to make sure that we're listening to everybody. But the responsibility as we move forward now, it, it, that falls on Erin, it Erin, it falls on every other, um, administrator in, in the, uh, in the district and stuff. We have to hear the concerns, they're, they're loud and clear and we're acknowledging the concerns. And it's time perhaps to get more answers. We've had two years now of the survey information and it's, some of it is pretty loud and clear, we're hearing some of the things. But I will say this, having worked at that high school for all the years, more of the issues seem to be at the high school. Okay, so let's acknowledge that. Um, the student surveys that we received, you know, there, there's great information from our students, my God, the, the lifelong blood of our, our community and stuff, so we read that. The action items, I really like Nick, what you said there, because I think that's, we're, we're held to action items here. You know, and, and I know you work through your PLCs and everything, and through the, uh, the, the teacher groups and stuff. For, for those of you that have been in the district for a long time, how many times did we unpack standards in this district? My goodness. And for those, for those that don't understand, multiple times. We went through learning-focused solutions, the CUD model. And for those, remember, I had to give my presentations, what do you really want kids to know, understand and do? Well, part of the do is the formative work that you're requiring them to do. At least that's what I remember most from that learning-focused solution, Marzano. If you wanna do research, go to Marzano and take a look. And he does a very nice job in, in his communication of how to tie in the standard-based grading one, two, three, four into a letter grade and how that should easily segue into college and/or any other higher level learning after you leave high school. So do we have work to do? Yes, we as a district have work to do. We as a board, we have to listen. Crystal, you offered the other day, which I think is very important, when you have the questions, we go to the people that can help us give the answers and understand more. So it, it's, it's a lot to do, but we're in education, we've always had lots to do. And I, I, I am confident, knowing the people that work in our district, that we can work through this. But the number one thing is communication. That's my end of that.
Thanks, Erin, thanks, Erin, thanks, Wendy, same.
Thank you.
I'll just say, one more time before this concludes. This isn't, th- this is our only time to talk about this as a board. And so I, again, if people wanna leave, you can leave. If it's just us four talking, I'm cool with that, cause this is the only time our board can talk about this. Cause it's a, it's an item on our agenda. Without that item on there, we're all in the dark. Okay, um, so we need to have this discussion. Amy, I would ask you, I, I can't speak for the majority, but I hope the majority would agree. I do think that there needs to be, I don't think task force is the right word for it, but some kind of group.
We do have a group, and there's a group of shared leadership team then, and.
Not a handpicked group, I want, I want any.
Everybody is invited to be in that group.
That wants to be part of this discussion in an non-argumentative stance where people can actually see, here's the pros, here's the cons, let me tell you why. Let's, let's discuss it, let's have a real discussion and let's come up with ideas to fix it. If it's revisiting all these papers that see us all not, that's, that's part of that group, that's part of anybody that wants to be part of it, not, not handpicked by.
Anybody is invited.
It wasn't.
Leadership team.
So let her answer.
That's an argument, Laura.
It's not, okay, I am saying, please let her answer because she said it's not handpicked and then twice you said it's handpicked. Don't, you don't tell me to stop. You don't tell me to stop either.
But I think it's, I think it's very, I think it's very important that we as a district hear all the sides of this and allow, and allow for the proper discussion of it and, and set it up and make it, make it happen so that we can work through issues that high school has, issues middle school may have. Maybe we can learn what the elementary school is doing because there's not a lot of talk right now. So.
Thank you.
I'll leave it at that.
Amy said it's not handpicked, I'd like Curtis to finish that conversation.
I will lean towards Erin and Aaron to address how they have fielded questions and addressed questions along with their instructional coach team and their admin team. They're the team that is leading the work. I led the, I led the task force around behavior, cause that's an area of specialty that I have and I felt like I did a pretty good job with that. We have two other administrators who do a really good job managing their instructional leadership at their building that I've tasked with addressing those concerns. So I don't know if Erin and Aaron, did Erin, did Erin leave? Erin left, so I don't know if you wanna speak to that. Yeah, I don't know if you wanna speak to that, but I'm tasking your shared leadership teams with addressing those concerns.
Before that, on that, one of the first things that I did, a couple of times ago, my first time, there was a virtual meeting, bring everyone together, uh, and here and talk through, talk through some things, uh, including student community concerns, teacher concerns. One of the, the things that came out of, I was at middle school year one, there's standards-based grading at high school. So as I came up between year one and two, um, a couple of concerns that were brought up from, from the students and families and it's loud and clear that having multiple ways to ultimately change from the number to convert to a letter was really confusing. That it could, in seven classes, it could look seven different ways. We're gonna average, we're gonna average, we're gonna take the highest, we're gonna take the mode. Uh, it was happening, you know, so kids had different, different experiences, families had different experiences. Uh, so one of the things that we did, uh, was, was standardize the way that occurs. Um, there was talk about, you know, the reassessment guidelines and, and things like that. And as you can see, uh, there's different, there's, there's a wide spectrum, you know, from our, from our teaching staff, you know, as to, as to where they fall on that, what their beliefs on it. So to come up with one uniform policy for a lot of things to say, you must do X, may have appeased twenty teachers and, and set twenty teachers off the edge on the other side. So when you, when you create and you work and you go, you go through those, you create guidelines as opposed to policies often, because, you know, for some areas, their flexibility is important. For some areas, some uniformity is, is, is critical. Um, following my first year there, you know, so we're moving into the next summer, uh, a big concern from, from families, students and teachers was they felt that there was a large gap between the two, I guess, let me back up. The other thing that came out of that first summer was starting grades not working at the high school. So we put it out and talked about, discussed, hey, and modify it, what do we wanna do with it? Um, it was brought up in that meeting, hey, do we get rid of it? And, and the diet was, you know, what, yeah, it's, it's, it's not working for us. Uh, some people said, you know, I'm, I'm spending tons of time changing these all the time and I don't think anybody's listening to it or, you know, it's not impacting. Uh, some people said, uh, well, if we keep it, we gotta add more teeth to it right now. Uh, and only, you know, we can keep an athlete or someone in an activity out of a contest, but how do we, how do we kind of make it punitive for, for all or, you know, it's, you know, try to get people to, uh, to be in the right way, you know, that way, that it circle down and as a staff, we decided to get rid of it. Um, moving into the next year, except the big concern, yeah, engagement is, is a uniform concern, it is here. I, it, it is across the country and the world and there are things that are difficult. Um, so engagement has been an ongoing concern. That's where our shared leadership team has put a ton of effort, has worked with their colleagues, uh, to provide, provide, um, professional development. We have members, there are people providing and doing those demonstration lessons that are on the, the shared leadership team, uh, willing to share out and, and talk about, um, you know, and demonstrate for their, for their colleagues and talk through things. Uh, I think, which is a pretty cool thing, uh, our, our PD isn't me standing up there or us bringing in a speaker to talk, talk to our staff. It's our staff sharing out, hey, this is working for me, here's what I'm struggling with. A teacher started a survey about what they wanted that professional development to look like. Uh, so I think we are responding to that. Um, fast forward into, you know, the, the summary I started mentioning, the two and a, the two-point time, that was kind of across the board, coming from families, students, from teachers, like, hey, when we convert to a letter grade, there's a huge, there's a huge gap between a two and a three. Like, like, we're kind of missing the B sort of sense, like you had, uh, you had a three as an A and a two as a C and and people were struggling with, you know, yeah, if you don't meet all the requirements of the three, you know, what it tells you, it's a two. And but there's some, the feeling was, you know, there, we've got kids who are close and we had a two-point-five. We discussed it as a staff and, and we made, we made those changes. So I, I do think, I do think our staff has been involved in the conversations. I do think some of our staff feels that they aren't when the conversation comes to, we need a great formative assessment. And, you know, with standards-based grading, that's a non-starter. So when they, if that's brought to me, no, I, I have shut that down. And we haven't discussed that and brought that before full group because our, our system of, of assessment is standards-based grading. Um, if I'm told to do differently, we'll, we'll work through a new system, we'll figure it out, we'll, we'll do what's best by our teachers and, and our students. Uh, but that is a fundamental aspect of standards-based grading. So I haven't entertained changing that at all first. And I won't entertain changing that, I speak, we're gonna change our system of assessment. Sorry. I wanted to bring you through, you know, some of the things we've done over the last couple of years.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anybody up here has mentioned the words of getting rid of standard-based grades.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to defend, I'm just saying that was.
No, but I think what the conversation has been is that we're not listening and we're not adjusting to concerns. And I think what Erin's trying to describe is he is trying to do that.
And, and I, I hear what you're saying as far as what true standard-based grade is as far as, as far as the model. What I'm hung up on is, I, I get we're doing standard-based grades and nobody's saying, take it away. Nobody's saying, dump it here. Um, but kind of along with what Nick was saying is, I'm also hearing that there's not a lot, not a lot of room to, to listen and modify or.
But I think that's what we're trying to explain, is that there has been a lot of conversation and there has been adjustments made. But when it comes to grading formative assessments, that gets at the fundamental basis for standard-based grading and you now shift from proficiency to point-based grades. And I, I, I'm, I'm trying to get the point across that I think our, to Aaron's, are trying to listen and make adjustments and.
Question is, okay, we're not grading formative. Is there a way we can get the kids to do the work?
And that's what Aaron is describing.
Summative expectation. And so, okay, don't grade formative, I'm fine with that. But if we can get the kids to engage and do the work, that's what I'm looking for and what does that look like?
I think that's.
I, I agree, okay, don't grade it, but it has to look like something.
And that's, I would be any fool and. I would say that's when I talked about hearing and surveying our staff, like, what are your challenges? You know, what's working well, what are the challenges? Engagement is not surprisingly, I guess, that's what our professional development is about. Colleagues, teaching colleagues, demonstrating to colleagues. Caitlin, say, try to add to the, um, you know, she led some, some kid. I look, I walk into Caitlin's class now, how do you make them, how do you get them to do it? You know, like, there's, there's a lot of great things that she does. Wendy was talking, you know, and Wendy was talking and cheering. It's, it's strengthening, it's strengthening the PLC. It's, you know, looking at, making sure our instruction, our formative is, is directly connected. And I think she mentioned an important part, explicitly stating and showing how it is. Students today, I gotta ask you why a lot, you know, why are we doing this? How is this connect, you know, like, it, and, and showing and, and being explicit about that has a major impact on, you know, when they, when they get in.
And I wanna be careful, um, when we talk about the ones who are getting the kids to do some of this formative work, we talk about, well, they're engaging and meaningful. And that's what as educators, I believe, we're all striving for. Um, the reality is, is some subjects are a little more dry, a little more hard to engage and, and make real to the kids. And so how can we come alongside of those teachers? Again, not to almost shame them because, well, it's your fault the kids aren't engaged. Because that's not the reason as well, it's how can we come alongside and help to get these kids to want to learn this? But, you know, I think just be careful.
You're on the list of, I don't know.
I have to, I have to be really honest here. There are things that I am hearing tonight that are very concerning to me as well as disturbing. Because the reality that I live at the middle school, teachers who are wanting to improve their craft or wanting to find ways for kids to be engaged, to be involved, to be learning, our administration continually has supported them being able to do that. I have had branding teachers in my classroom where our administration has supported finding someone to cover their rooms so that they could come into my room and they could watch the different things that I'm doing so they can take it back to their room. Um, I've then gone to their room and watched them implementing things so that we can continue to find tune. And it's not just been teachers who teach math. Um, I was super surprised to have a brand new English teacher say, can I come and observe your engagement? I'm like, you do realize I teach math? And it's very different, but she said, I've just heard that you've got ways of getting the kids involved. And so if you're okay with it, can I come? And I said, absolutely. But I also know that I work with teachers who they will complain, they will say things in the teacher's lounge, they will say things out in the community, but when administration says to them, you have this opportunity, would you like to get? Oh, oh, now you're gonna tell me that I don't know how to do my job? Well, you were the one that just said you're struggling with this. And so when administration is offering those opportunities, there are also those colleagues of mine that don't take advantage of it.
Sure.
And I think that that's a reality that has to be out there and I am not suggesting that of anyone here who has spoken up about their concerns. Um, I've worked with Lee, I, when he was at the middle school, I, he's a very dedicated educator and I validate the concerns that he brought up. But a lot of the concerns that I've heard tonight center around a continued education piece and our willingness to look at how can we improve our communication regarding feedback? And how can we get better at helping our students engage and understand the big picture?
And I, and I hear you and I think I'm bringing it up again as a representative. Cause I have heard that. And, and so again, just getting it out into, you know, open session where we're listening, we're hearing, we're trying to engage, we're trying to talk. We're trying to do all of that. So this isn't just me popping up with a question of.
I get, I get that, I'm a representative.
Right. So, so that's just kind of this. Again, we haven't been able to do this. So I think it's important that we're listening, you know?
And I couldn't see you. That, that was really brave of you to share. So thank you. I know that wasn't easy.
Hell, if you knew me, you'd know.
Drinks later.
This is Tina Galvin. Very briefly, um, I feel I was not supported in a student incident. A student had not taken a test. The cover was on a current, a previous year before. And I thought to have, like, get that student to come in and, and all help them out and advise me all directly. They just come in and take that test and pass the class. And my administrator said, they already passed on their previous standard, they do not have to take the test, they are passing regardless of these. And considering that admin has always supported features, my personal experience is that has not been the case.
And we have to hear all signs of this.
I think that the communication with the families and education on how standard space grading works and the process and what it means. And having the system where if your child doesn't turn something in or maybe gets a two or a one, you get some kind of alert as a parent. I think that's gonna make a major impact in all the missing assignments, all the, you know, it's, it's like making a cake. You, you'd eat all these ingredients to make the cake. And if you don't have the ingredients, cake is crap. So it's, it's, I look at it that way. But I think that touching all the families and I realize that you have to, you know, both ways.
A regular, it can't just be one time.
Right.
Every year.
Right.
And even realizing that, I talked to Amy, the app on the phone is much different than viewing it on the web. I didn't, on the, on the app, I don't see my son's missing work. I didn't realize that you can see that when you log in. So again, the parental education, um, is a big piece there.
Is that a capability in power school?
Well, it's not right now, so we're struggling, but we're trying to figure out that different way of getting around it.
If the app crashes, uninstall and reinstall and it.
Oh, okay, cause mine's. And I don't use the app, I just still touch for weeks.
I, I'd really like to see the next step of beyond this discussion here, beyond this mean admin and staff working together to, to truly figure out how to best implement standard based grade and move forward. And I know we're circling around formative assignments, you know, but I, I really don't think we need to be stuck. And while it's called this, we need to do this. Let's make our own models, set our own standard for state of Wisconsin. I don't care. Call, call whatever you want. As long as a district and as long as every teacher in this district and every administrator knows how we're, you know, grading students, how we're, um, grading, grading the staffs. Um, I, I, I think it is missing. I, I really don't think, if you take teachers from different schools and ask the same standards, I, I, I don't think they're getting the same, get the same answer. Um, but we as a district need to come together and figure out how do we give those standards to everybody so that everybody's on the same page and everybody does the same thing. I would ask Steve and Amy, all right here, if you would put just a standard based grade discussion on the next month's agenda so we can continue discussion. I'll just end it here tonight.
And what would that discussion look like or for what purpose? Cause a month isn't that much and that's.
Well, because, because versus, you get some people that don't, don't wanna be here all night, it's hot. I want to be able to say that we can continue this discussion. We can continue having honest, good discussion on standard based grade and what we can do. Because ultimately then I would hope that administrators, the district and teachers can all hear the discussion happening and come together as one and, and figure this out. That's what I would hope. I would like to have more discussion. I don't wanna try to wrap everything up in one night. I'd like to.
I prefer not to have that next month, considering what we have going on in the next two weeks. I prefer in August.
Okay, if you could promise me we'll put it on an upcoming agenda because I would like to even myself go home and unpack some of the stuff that we talked about tonight. I would like to take time and then I don't wanna go home and be like, oh, I'm never gonna be able to talk about it again because nobody's gonna put it on agenda. I want to assure you that we can get this back on agenda so we can, after unpacking it individually, come back and talk about it again and continue good discussion.
I would echo what Amy says about August or July, we have just the one meeting.
Yeah.
We don't have an open session. Whatever, you don't have a cow.
Don't have a cow, Steve.
Will you guys put it on August agenda?
What about?
Two people that have, have to stay on the agenda here.
I, and I believe this is like a little bit like not fully transparent is because when we had our small meetings, I think Crystal had showed us, we've had about thirty uh, presentations. So it has been an ongoing conversation. I don't think it'll go away. I would be more comfortable with there is already this team, how about they come back and do a presentation?
Like an update?
Right, like.
So I was thinking in August we'll have shared leadership.
Doing their work, I would, we add an additional thing.
I want something that gives us, that gives us the ability to talk about the topic. I don't care.
And that's what it would be if we invite them.
As long as this gives me and the rest of us opportunity to discuss standards, it's great. I don't care how it's worked on there, as long as it's honors that we can talk about. Whether it's a presentation that still allows us to discuss it, opens the door for us to discuss it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I, I know we've had the conversations behind doors as individuals, Crystal and Amy. Again, this is the very first time we as a board.
This board.
Have been able to discuss this.
Thank you.
In some abundance here, so.
Oh, we've got dates, so it's definitely, uh, this board probably the first time.
We put it on in August. Thank you.
And then I think, so you know, I looked at that, our shared leadership team won't have met before the regular meeting, so. Yeah, it might need to be September now.
You may not like this, but you might want to be nice and consider.
September.
I care more, I care most. I care mostly, I care for you guys, but I care for us to have discussion.
You can't have the conversation without them. They're doing the work. We're not doing the work. We need them here. Yeah.
Have to be able to talk to.
Have them here.
If it gets put on August and it gets put on October, great. I'm happy, I'm happy for more discussion.
I would say October. That gives time, but.
I also think that before there's. But then I guess session. I keep hearing the surveys, the surveys. But I don't feel as if we have done a survey that is truly representative of all staff in this district. In order for that to be true, we need to either tell every staff member they have to complete it or we have to do a randomized. If we're gonna collect data that's meaningful and purposeful, we've gotta do it the right way. And.
I would love that.
Well, you could if we create time in a, in a meeting to say, hey, fill this out, sure.
They tell us all the time, professional development. They tell me completely.
There are ways.
Ten, alright.
Yes, you can have a fair six.
It's our ticket out the door.
I'd be, I'd be all for a district wide survey. I'd be all for that. And if you'd like to put that beyond, that's good.
And I really, I, I wanna just, um, also, I'm so sorry. Um, but Aaron Liebert said he hasn't, and I don't know if this is true, but he hasn't had people come to him. Um, we gotta utilize these processes and a lot of the emails, I was like, yeah, thank you for your email. Please go to your PLC then, then go to your admin and, and say, these are the. Try to fix it that way and obviously it's worked for some people. If it's still not working, then that's when we continue to go back and say, okay, we don't have an answer for this. We up here, I just, we are not doing your jobs, you know? And, and so the answers are really gonna come from you all, you know? And I hope people utilize these structures that are in place. A lot of you have a ton of experience. I know you could come up with the answers to make this work. I really do. I believe in that. Seeing some of you when I was a student, I, I just please ask that you, you try that if you haven't already.
Shared leadership tends to be a one-way street. Usually it's kinda like the top, they meet and then they come to just to let the board know.
Yeah.
Then we have our in-service and they lead us in our in-service, wherever representatives are. And not, everyone's got flies for shared leadership, not everyone is picked for shared leadership. There's some budgetary issues or process, so.
Yeah.
Everyone can ask to be on it, but not everyone gets to be on it.
Good to know. Yeah. Thanks, Kyle.
Last year, I think everyone who applied from high school was on it. This year we're.
This year we reduced because of budget constraints.
Did you say there was eight?
That was different, that was a different committee. So we're gonna say something.
If you do your meeting in October, does that give time for you to do like a parent education about what the grading system is? Implement the, if my kid's missing an assignment, I get a email.
Well, I can't, I'm working on that. I can't, not.
Promise.
Technology, yeah.
You're gonna do it.
That's gonna be money, right? That'll have impact in the October results. So I'm hearing the majority of the board say they would like this in October now, but I'm looking at you, Steve.
Is that enough time then? Are we gonna go through a whole nother year without any changes then? That's, I guess my fear is if we do in October, then the school year will be just the same, the whole year.
Well, I, I don't think there necessarily, nobody's saying I think that there's gonna be changes. I think discussions. Like that's, that's what it is. Like if we go through this and nothing changes and everybody has a chance to speak on what.
But we do want some updates of hearing.
Sure, yeah, but that's, I think.
Some of the challenges being met or.
I think that's the point, just getting in on a, on a meeting, on agenda, that's just to hear it.
And Amy particularly the, um, reevaluating, maybe readdressing the reassessment guidelines and instructions and then the late work guidelines, because the late work I know is, keeps coming up. So, yeah, thank you.
Yep, I have a list.
One more. Okay, uh, we good here?
Good.
I can see till August or October. All right. Director of Special Services, Special Education Department, Dave, welcome. Thank you guys for coming.
Thanks, guys. I'm Dina Hagan, Director of Special Services. I just wanted a few minutes to give you guys an update from special education. I won't take uh much time because we're.
Thank you, Wendy.
Yeah. Um, so a couple of things I just wanted to celebrate. That was the main goal of, of tonight, just to celebrate a few things. Um, can you go forward? Um, the first thing I wanted to just, I have the clicker. That's right.
Yeah.
Um, hiring staffing, this is super exciting for me in special education. We've filled seven out of our eight positions going into the school year next year. Five of those people were pulled off of the reemployment list because they were interested in going into special education, whether wanting to get a license or they already had the license. So this is just a summary of what we've done. Um, we, we were also able to hire a special education coach. Um, and let you guys know we were gonna do that and not have an assistant director anymore, although thank you Erica. This is our last board meeting, um, before she moves on from us. So I'll have a coach. Um, yeah, move into the next chapter. Um, we have one opening left at the, at the middle school that we're working on. Um, but otherwise I feel really good about going into the next year, so. Um, this is just something else I just really wanted to highlight to make sure you guys really knew about what's going on.
We really haven't talked about this at the board level.
Right, there was, there was an introduction to it last year, but we've been through a year of it and it's not technically special education. But I'm involved, so I, I just wanted to make sure and update you guys. So the College of San Scholastica got almost a four million dollar grant um, to be able to do mental health work in schools. And so obviously CSS and Duluth, um, went out and got some partner schools in the area and Superior is one of them. Of this, there's three in the area. And so this year they had two, um, uh, or they had a successful experience at the, at the middle school. So let me, let me tell you about this backing up to. CSS has a, has a very good occupational therapy program. Um, and part of OT training is mental health. Understanding mental health, supporting mental health strategies. It's not often used in schools, you know, our OTs work on other things. However, they have the training, they're highly skilled. So this grant was able to pay for some students to be placed in our middle school. We had one first semester, one the second semester for them to do work in the tier one core with uh instruction and tier two needs. And so we had two really great students placed. Next year we're gonna have nine across the district. I'm so excited. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have more at the middle school and then Northern Lights and Bryant are gonna join in on the fun. And we're gonna get that extra support with, with the mental health. So super excited and hopefully we can continue this for a long time. Um, couple other celebrations from this year. We did some work around supporting our special ed staff with their paperwork. Um, cause we all know special education paperwork is a, is a, can be a burden. So we had four pizza and paperwork nights. So one, one each quarter where we, we fed a pizza and we paid them to come from four to seven here in this room and work on their paperwork. We had an average of sixteen people come.
This was an idea they wanted.
Yep.
Yeah.
They came up with this, so we made it happen. So that was awesome. Um, we also have offered paperwork days. Meaning if you're elementary, you could take one day per trimester or secondary, you could take one um, per quarter and get a sub and get caught up on your paperwork. And we had some people take advantage of that. I don't have all the numbers. It wasn't everybody. But it, we had some good response from that. We're gonna continue both those things again next year. They're fairly inexpensive and they had a huge benefit. We got a lot of great, um, comments on that. Um, just working on some more, ensuring we have customized professional development for our special ed staff. Um, I came up with a menu that's kind of gonna be ongoing to, to select some topics when they have some time, um, to learn about some different things that they need. And then we have a pair of professional training day coming next year. We haven't had that for a pair of professionals and so on our, our staff at home, a day of September thirtieth, we're gonna put a, a training day in place for them for just that, like topics that they need. So I'm excited about that. Um, lastly, uh, we continue to, to work around and figure out how to best respond to challenging student behaviors, whether it's preschoolers, high schoolers and everyone in between. Um, we've done a lot of work this year, just really digging in and, um, working alongside teams at buildings, um, exploring different strategies. The principals have been, oh, I spelled that wrong, sorry. The principals have been awesome, teachers, and also everybody working together to try something, come back to the table in a month, see how it went, try something else with these kids that really, really have these tough behaviors. That's been exciting. But lastly, one thing that's expanded this year, I wanted to make sure you knew about. So the Minnesota Autism Center, which is what MAC stands. So the Minnesota Autism Center, which is what MAC stands for, they have expanded into Wisconsin and Iowa. So it's a private company that provides ABA or Applied Behavior Analysis Therapy for kids with autism, usually severe situations. But they opened their first Wisconsin location in Superior. It's over by Cooper and Church over there. Um, so we have started to build a stronger relationship with them as partners because if families get involved with them as a private company, we, they work closely with schools. So maybe we have a kid that, you know, we're working real hard with, but they, they add some family components as far as helping their student with autism. Or maybe we've had some kids like go there for a part day to their center to get some intensive therapy, so. That's been awesome and we'll continue to work on that, so. Any questions about anything I wanted to share?
Sure.
Alright.
Oh, it's hot here.
Jerry Saunders, Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion.
Did you see there was an intro slide to this presentation? It's gone now.
Oh.
I don't, it's fine. It was just my name and wow, it was really hot. Good evening, everybody. Uh, this is the like end of year DEI update. I last spoke to you in December and I think it was a little rushed then as well. Basically, we had equity audit action steps that really directed and guided a lot of the work that I was doing each year. For this school year, uh, we really, you know, focused on that common equity learning and a focus on microaggressions, um, with the administrative team, which that was all taken care of. And then since, um, I've been here, we did, uh, the implicit bias training for all of our staff in, I should say certified staff, uh, in February. That was with Jevva Admins and it was really well received. Uh, then the day after that, we did choice sessions and again, we're based on the staff survey results and I know Crystal likely gave an update on that, but the choice sessions went really well. Uh, we're wrapping up our third year of seed with twenty-four participants. We already have twelve registered for, um, the next, the fourth cohort.
Tell us what that is again, sorry, seed.
Seeking educational equity through diversity.
Pretty intense, uh, monthly training that staff can ask to be a part of and then we pay them for their. Yeah, it's good training.
So it starts out, I mean, every year I'm like, oh, I'm really slow. This is very basic. But by the end of the cohort, like we are having really just incredible conversations. People that are there are like, thank you for this. This is such a great opportunity, you know, to be able to just learn with our, with colleagues. Um, finally, that we wrote in about book studies with a focus on equity and I know those are taking place this summer. Crystal, I'm sure has spoke a little bit about that. A big thing that I want you to know, since, since I've been here in December, implemented this training called Words Matter Training. Um, it's not like copyrighted or anything. It's just something that I put together with curated sources. Really to, uh, train our athletes and coaches on what is harassment, what is bullying, like why do you need to know this as an athlete? Um, I want all of our students to be eligible for sports. And some of our students were getting in trouble for saying things where they didn't even realize that, um, they were, you know, maybe microaggressions taken really, really the wrong way. Uh, we went into implicit bias a little bit. The coach has to be in the room with the students. It has been a huge, huge success. I do an exit sheet and share those with Dr. Sarzaki. Every single student fills one out. I would, you can share the comments.
Can you think of a couple of student comments? I can't.
Color, I cannot tell you how important this training has been to me. Uh, that was a big one that came out. You know, they don't put their names on it. Um, a lot of kids are like, why haven't I learned about this before? Just the difference between harassment and bullying or like what it is, why is it important? You know, they all acknowledge that they have like read the code of conduct. Parents check off that, that we've read it.
But I think you do it in a way that provides context for the, how it applies as a teammate.
Why it's.
Yeah, where, when we talk about it, you know, as part of an advisory lesson, people are like, okay, okay, okay. But when you give real life examples about how this impacts people on a team or other teams that you play. I think that's stories. I think they get it. I think they get it.
Stories. I tell them about my history of, and kind of how I became so passionate about this and, uh, the feedback, yes, I mean, you know, we talk about kids not turning in work. Uh, I mean, these kids were writing, 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 not have the evidence. So anyway, uh, that has been great. Uh, I've been at the high school, uh, for.
Couple months, three or three months, three months.
Uh, you know, we've had non-athletes who really need this training and they can't even handle having the training in a class of fifteen of their peers because it's hard to talk about. And this is not about shaming kids. It's about you don't know what you don't know. Uh, and when you know better, you can do better. And we're talking about school environment, not judging what's going on at home, school and what language is welcome here and what language do we not welcome? I've had kids, uh, in tiers after this training and they're like, thank you, thank you for that. And they, they, we have not had additional incidents, so. You know, really, really, that's been, I think, the biggest success is that we're, we're giving these kids the information proactively most of the time. There are times where we are doing safety plans and we're like, okay, you're gonna get a scholastic. And we knew it and it's not a shaming thing, but again, that feedback, like I didn't even know this. So that's been really great. Um.
Carrie is hazing under harassment, just.
You stand up, it gets hotter.
It is so, so hot. Hazing does come. If you look at our policy, hazing is, um, in there and they ask really good questions. Some of the teams have invited me back. And I mean, we're just hitting the tip of the iceberg. It's uncomfortable. We're not having these conversations with kids because as adults, we're not comfortable talking about it. So we need to normalize that some more.
Thank you.
Okay, fast forward, huge celebration. A Native American student, the one up here in the corner who's looking over the drumming, came back to Superior and was like, why do we not have a native club? So talk about student voice. They got the club up and going. That led us to, um, normalizing smudging outside of the school before club met. This student here is an amazing, amazing drummer. The club has kind of fallen apart just because kids had challenges and are doing some different learning right now. But that, that was very, very powerful. We had that drumming right out in the comments during clubs and kids are like, what, what is that? What, like we can't, you sing and you drum and lots about, you know, the Jiveway culture, so that is a celebration. Um, I mean, I couldn't go through all this. Basically, that affinity group at the middle school that I've talked about, still with them. I've left the high school and I go and I work with these kids every Wednesday. Uh, these are the ones who came on the after-school field trip to the city of Superior's, um, first MLK Day celebration. Um, Laura, you were there and saw us and the kids just the other day said they felt like celebrities getting out of their school van, walking into the library. But they, they really enjoyed that. We continue to meet and we're going on a field trip on Wednesday.
And to see Henry Banks, an elder in the community.
Yeah, and I'm sure Henry, um, will up with us when we're downtown Duluth. The district, um, was an equity sponsor for the Freedom Fund Dinner and so my wonderful colleagues attended that with me. We were able to support Amanda Linquist, who got a huge award. I can't remember exactly what it was. Something like most positive, um, member or something. But that was a great networking, um, and just opportunity, um, to even see, you know, more of what's going on in the community. Here's our microaggression training. I'm, uh, it was very well received. They're taking the implicit bias test right there. The teachers are, um, Laughing Fox Assembly at Northern Lights. That was so much fun. Laughing Fox came, the kids were thrilled to have that native celebration. David Coy did a great little five-minute video, if you have a chance to watch it. It, it's just, um, really refreshing. He is super engaging. That was really fun to see the little kids enjoying that. Um, more on Black History Month, middle school affinity group wanted to bring awareness and just plaster the school with all these famous black Americans and like what they're famous for. The Black Student Union wanted to do a movie night, so they, we listened to their voice and they took it and ran with it. Uh, Culture Night, that huge event at the middle school. Jen, you were there with this group, um, with us. That, like there was a sitting room, like there were no chairs left at one point. Kids were like fighting over these books and bingo, the parents were very, very involved and that was just a Jivway language. Bingo. Um, and we have ideas, you know, how we can make that even stronger and have more opportunities like that. But you can see little kids were proud to win books. Another huge highlight, um, our American Indian youth with stethoscopes, uh, field trip. Ten students went this year overnight field trip in the cities and the highlight of that is this young lady on the left. Lots and I mean, like this is the last kid you'd expect to go on a field trip like this. She now, um, has decided to not work in the daycare anymore and she's gonna be getting her CNA, um, certificate. So she was like, yeah, when I went and saw, you know, all those native doctors and, you know, got to do all the activities, like this is what I want to do. So that was an awesome field trip. Um, they delivered babies, they gave them donations. Uh, it was phenomenal. So there's been a lot of support for that. And there's the scholars with their medical jackets and just the, the connections that have been made there. Excellent. Um, I told you about the opioid grant that we had. Um, part of that was an Ask the Expert event. Laura, I saw you there. Thank you. Um, and then the Hidden in Plain site, February and April, we had those bedrooms set up and it was very well attended at the middle school. So there was lots of, um, press attention around that. So just bringing that awareness, we need more of it, uh, but that was a start. Okay, I'm almost done.
Our graduates.
Yes, these, these graduation stalls. We started with the graduation ceremony. Last year was the first year we did it. We had these very basic, kind of cheap-looking stalls. They still were so proud to wear them last year, but this year, like we really upped the, the game and, um.
They were beautiful.
Oh my gosh. And yeah, they were beautiful and kids wore them so proudly. So this is actually from, um, graduation, but then this is from the ceremony, um, that we had at the Billings Park Community Center. Um, you'll notice like, you know, kids were able to invite a teacher to an invite. Um, all of the admins were there. Um, lots of parents were there and kids who have never attended anything like this before came and it was uncomfortable to be recognized like that, but, um, it was an awesome, awesome experience. Okay, that was a lot of talking. Um.
That was awesome.
Very hot here, what?
I just need some water. Okay, am I done?
Okay, we're bummed with our dates here, um, so we're pushing that to some other time.
It's Monday.
Yeah.
That's it.
Is it?
Yeah, just an hour and a half, we're done with the mine part. So moving on.
And we shall move to the last one, Budget Insurance with Nick Olson.
Last but not least, I have one informational item, David. Any, we have money in the bank.
Yeah, there will be a resolution next week.
Anyway, since, since Dave mentioned the word survey. The, the email survey that came out kind of seemed like spam when it hit my email box, like I wasn't expecting it. Jen, we have Dave, boy, do like some great video or something saying, hey, this is what's coming out. So it's like, put it out there in social media so people know more about what's going on.
Well, um, first of all, the email I think you're referring to went to staff.
Yeah.
And that didn't come from us. That came from the company because they wanted it to be a third party. Like we wanted people to think it was transparent. I, I agree. I didn't even know when it hit my box. That's the survey. Um, we were planning to push out this week, information on social media, letting people know that the surveys are out there. Look for your mailbox, get them filled out. I wasn't planning to do a video, but Casey was gonna help us get some social media blasts out there.
Yeah, because they've already hit, so hopefully.
Been throwing them away. Started so we can, check your mailbox, make sure you've got your survey. So we were gonna do that like in the next couple of days was the plan. Is that not, I mean, I don't think we need a video.
Dave does his big impact stuff, like let's just put it out there, let's get as much info as we can and surveys are here.
Get a kid to do it.
Do them, don't throw them away type thing. It's for the kids.
It is for the kids.
Also saying, and they also have the ability, type of send them, just click the link to be sent all the parents, but they just don't want to do it. Someone will email with the staff, that will be coming from us, the school district.
But they will need their code that's on their.
Yeah.
Pail.
We will give them, uh, what we wanted, the link on it, like you just click on it and it has an embedded code. So they could actually. Okay. We've already had people call in and ask for additional codes.
Damn.
Nice.
As of last Thursday, we sent, you know, somewhere for the staff, we had ninety-five respondents. I'm like, ask, they said that's not enough.
Well, thanks for asking. Uh, one action item, gifts, grants and bequests. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants and bequests received in May twenty twenty-four.
To approve.
Very impressive. Motion in the second. Looks awesome. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, motion carries. And Mr. Steve, Mr. President.
And that concludes our meeting this evening. Thanks.
Sure.
Oh, we just started.